Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting of September 4th. I'm going to call the meeting to order at 7:02 in the evening. I'll ask everyone to rise, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you very much. And now I'm going to ask Maureen, our planner, for the roll call.
June Daly. Andrea Millard. Diane Jorsy. Him Zigma. Brian Rogan. Got Hamel.
Present by Zoom.
Chairman Veely.
Here.
Alternate John Dyken.
Present.
Alternate Steve Biella, Jr. You know he's there.
Steve Biella, yeah, he's got his hand raised, so maybe he's having problems unmuting. Okay, but we know.
Present.
All right, thank you, Steve. Okay, we have full compliments, so, all right, everyone's here, great. All right, let's move on to the receipt of new applications and scheduling of public hearings as required or necessary. Do you have anything for us there?
Um, we do not.
Oh, hallelujah. All right.
We have a couple that came in today, so you won't hear about them until next.
No, I don't want, I don't want to know nothing. Okay, approval of the minutes for August 21st. Present were Ms. Daly, Mr. Zigma, Ms. Jorsy, myself, Mr. Rogan, Ms. Miller, Mr. Dyken, and Mr. Biella. So have we had a chance to review the minutes for August 21st? Do we have any corrections?
I noted no corrections. I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, Ms. Jorsy has the motion to approve. Second by Mr. Zigma. Further discussion, all those in favor? Those opposed, so moved. Commission Business. Item A is the site plan application of the Kariotti Family Limited Partnership for Construction of a Parking Lot at 2197 Berlin Turnpike, MBL 21-4-153-13, 2189 Berlin Turnpike, MBL 21-4-153-12, and Zero Stone Drive, MBL 21-4-153-11A. Okay, so, yes.
Madam Chair, can I just comment that this does have a must-aside date of tonight? The application has used up all of its extension time, so there's no more extension time on this application, and also this has been presented at previous meetings, so you should clarify who's seated for this.
Okay, it would be the.
Dyken was seated at the last meeting when some of the testimony was taken. I don't know if anyone who was not seated, regular members not seated, may or may not have reviewed the record.
Okay.
So that should be confirmed if that's the case.
All right, who was last meeting? Who did we have on board?
I was, I was seated last meeting.
That was Daly, Zigma, Jorsy, myself, Rogan, Miller, Dyken, and Biella.
No, Steve was.
Oh, but Steve was not seated. He was present at the meeting, but he was not seated.
Okay, all right.
I was not either.
Yep. Okay, all right, so voting on this matter tonight would be everyone except for Mr. Hamel and Mr. Biella. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. And, and Mr. Dyken, you were seated for this, so you'll be seated just for the, for this particular item on the agenda.
I understand, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Your notes are clear? Okay. All right, and now there's no other extension time available to us beyond today.
Right, and they will, he does have a revised plan that he's presenting, and you were distributed the staff comments that summarize the recommendations and/or explanations or things for you to make determinations on.
Okay, all right, well, hi, how are you doing?
Doing great.
Good, good evening. All right.
Again?
Yes, go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. For the record, my name is Dave Whitney. I'm a licensed professional engineer with an office in Avon, representing the owners and applicants, the Kariotti Family Limited Partnership Limited. Also, in the corner over there is a representative from the applicant, Donnie Kariotti, who can answer any questions that I can't.
Okay.
Once again, I'd like to thank Maureen. We've had a number of meetings, and I keep throwing revised plans at her, so she's been, been very, very pleasant to work with, at least on the outside.
That was a left-handed compliment, don't you think? All right, we will hold it against you, Mr. Whitney.
I know what it's like when somebody keeps changing things, and it can be difficult to continually scramble. I appreciate promptness in review. Okay, we've, we've gone over this parking lot. Three parcels of land, we came in for the zone change application, and three parcels were changed to the PI Zone and will be merged with the existing building owned by the applicant at 24 New Park Drive. One of the tenants in 24 New Park Drive is the NPL Construction Company, which is a nationwide company that installs underground gas lines and such. They need more parking, so the proposal, as we've talked about, is for new parking lot on a portion of the three lots that are being merged with the subject site to the south of the existing building. I've revised the plans a number of times, but the latest revisions are shown here in yellow with the revision date of August 31st, 2025. We've talked about what's the definition of a parking lot, and it's been decided that things like trailers and backhoes and excavators are not considered vehicles, but outdoor storage is permitted in a parking lot in the industrial zone. So there's been no change to the layout of the parking lot, but the 50 spaces that are oversized, 10 by 35 each space, have now been classified as outdoor storage area one. And then relatively recently, it turns out that the tenants need second outdoor storage area in the back of the site. There'll be three 15 by 20 concrete block bins for sand and aggregate to use as the base material for the pipes they lay if they can't get the material delivered in a timely manner to their job sites. And then there'll be an area also for some pallets with some pipe on it. So this is called outdoor storage area two, and it's tucked in the back of the proposed parking lot. For outdoor storage area number one, vehicles will consist of large and small dump trucks, 30 feet and 15 feet, pickup trucks with enclosed trailers, for a total of 32 feet. They're called yellow iron, which is backhoes and excavators. The backhoes are 20 feet, the excavators are 15 feet when, when the bucket's pulled in. And then there'll be some trailers, 25-foot trailers. We've also showing 60, 60 additional standard parking spaces, nine by 18 for, for vehicles, including 23, I'm sorry, 24 spaces directly adjacent to the building on the north side of the new parking lot, south side of the building with, these are 10 feet away from the, the building as required by regulations, with a, a strip of grass and a sidewalk all along the side of the building to connect to the sidewalk that's in the front of the building to bring anybody around to the entrance, which is in the front northern corner of the building. Also, I've added, we talked last time about how the, the other tenants in the building, and, and there's, there's two companies there, and I was, I was a little bit, I was mistaken last time, because I thought NPL occupied the whole building. Part of the building is occupied by a fiber optics company called Go Net Speed. And they later Go Net Speed. They use the, the back portion of the, of the existing parking lot for 24 New Park Drive right now for their vehicles. But in the very back of, of, of the parking lot that's here, they've used 16 parking spaces for outdoor storage of spools of, of, of fiber optic wire and such. We talked at the last meeting how this, this, this issue had come up, and so I have now added on to the plan, instead of the 16 spaces, an outdoor, existing outdoor storage area for the Go Net Speed tenant in the building. If, if need be, these 16 spaces can be replaced by some of the 60 new spaces in the new parking lot. However, I'm not sure that's going to be necessary, but just in terms of making up for the, the, the change from the previous approved plan, we're certainly providing more spaces than have been taken away by the existing outdoor storage. You can't, you can't see these spools of, of wire and, and fiber optics from anywhere, really. Again, tucked in the back of the site. We also added a double row of six-foot-tall Arbivites along the, the front of the site. I went and I took some pictures. I don't know if, I, I will be handing something out in a minute, but very similar to the Berlin Fire Station, which is a little bit north, farther north on the turnpike. I think it's a very effective screening for the parking lot. Let's see. Town engineer sent me some comments on Tuesday of this week in response to the latest plans. And he said, David, this is his email from September 2nd. David, thank you for revised drawings and report on the storm drainage system. See below for a few comments. At our July 23rd meeting, you mentioned you met with the DOT's district drainage engineer regarding discharge to their system at the turnpike. Is your revised approach releasing the peak flows before the larger watersheds peak arrives at the DOT's twin culverts consistent with the DOT recommendations? Item two, please note the type of the 24-inch discharge pipe from the outlet structure to the plunge pool. This is the detention basin. Here is the outlet pipe. Here is the plunge pool. This is the outlet pipe he's referring to. Item three, more information would be helpful for the contractor on the outlet structure. And then item four, in addition, adding engineering details for catch basins and storm drain pipe, trenching as well as a graphic scale is advisable, so the contractor is clear on the design intent. So I responded to him that, yes, we've been in contact with the DOT, and in fact, today we received an email from Monique Burns, and I'll read that in a minute. But the answer is to his first question, yes, the DOT is satisfied with our drainage calculations and our proposed storm drainage plan, which discharges to their system twin 48-inch culverts located in front of 20 New Park Drive. I indicated that I recommend reinforced concrete pipe for storm drainage pipe. However, if the applicant wants to install the high-density, high-density polyethylene pipe, that's also acceptable as long as it's installed properly. And as far as the outlet structure detail and the standard details regarding catch basins and pipe trenching, I indicated to him that I would add these details to the plan. So, and then I sent him a reply with a question. If the members of the Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission were inclined to approve this application at their meeting tomorrow night, would you be okay with a condition of approval that required your comments be addressed and the plans revised to your satisfaction? And he replied, "Good afternoon, Dave. Although this is at the discretion of the Planning and Zoning Commission, I take no exception to these being added as conditions of approval. However, I think it would be in your best interest to get confirmation from the DOT by Thursday's meeting regarding the drainage." So Mr. Hearn is willing to accept, as a condition of approval, we address his comments. Today, I received an email from Monique Burns, who's the District One Drainage Engineer. We, as I mentioned, we had met with her out at the site a while back and discussed the entrance, proposed entrance driveway, and the proposed drainage discharge. And I sent her the latest plans along with my report and drainage calculations and her email today, and I forwarded this to Maureen, so I think you have it for the file. "Hi, David. The drainage report and revised plans preliminarily look good. Thank you for keeping the detention pond and the drainage pipe off state property." Three items, and she wants me to add some spot elevations at the, the entrance of the driveway. And again, these, these, this is not a detailed plan for the DOT. This is, it will be, but this is to show how we intend to, to access the site, and we will have to submit a formal application to the DOT, but that's typically comes after the town's planning and zoning approval. So she wants me to add some spot elevations at the entrance, and she wants me to do a gutter flow analysis because, as she points out, the slope of the road here is neither steep or flat. It's about in the middle, and she, he wants to know if, if there's any possibility we would need to add additional catch basins. And then the third item is that the property owner would need to enter into a hold harmless agreement due to the detention pond adjacent to the state's right-of-way and the discharge to the brook. And then that this agreement is produced by our office, on and on, assigned by the unit manager and provided the owner, owner for signature and filed with the land records. Hope this helps. Please reach out if you have any questions. Otherwise, you can submit revised plans and include the items noted above, and we will start the review process." Okay, so that is, that's positive feedback from the DOT about our driveway, our proposed driveway, and our proposed storm drainage. And, and again, we won't get a formal approval from the DOT till after I submit revised plans or detailed plans to her, and that comes after local zoning approval. Let's see. Okay. We talked about screening at the last meeting, and as I mentioned, I've added a double row of Arbivites. And I also clarified that there are two tenants in the building, Northern Pipeline, NPL, and, and Go Net Speed. And specifically mentioned the, the types of vehicles that NPL will be storing in this parking lot. At the last meeting, and this was an error on my part, at the last meeting, I showed you some photographs, Go Net Speed, which I had thought was a subsidiary of NPL. It is not. It is a separate company. So the, the 39-foot-long pickup truck So the, the 39 foot long, um, pickup truck with a trailer. These vehicles will not be stored on the new parking lot. The longest vehicle will be the pickup truck with the enclosed trailer at 32 feet. And again, the spaces shown here are 10 feet by 35 feet long. And let me, let me try to, uh, clarify a little bit about this parking lot too, cause I think this is important and I don't think I made it clear. Uh, NPL has, has, uh, projects all over the state and they've got a couple other yards where they, they, they have vehicles as well. But it will not be on a daily basis that 40 or 50 NPL employees arrive at this site in their own vehicles. Park their cars, get into the pickup trucks and, and the dump trucks and things, drive to the job site. Then come back at the end of the day, then get into their cars and go home. That's not what happens. The, the excavators, the backhoes, um, they get moved to a job site and they stay at that job site. Whether it's a month or two or three, whatever it takes. Um, and the, the, the operators don't drive here. They drive to the job site, park their cars by the side of the road. I'm sure you've seen this. And then, you know, operate their equipment. So it's not like we're going to have a massive amount of, of, of employees every day coming, going, coming back and then going home. In fact, uh, I spoke with the, the folks at NPL and they said sometimes this parking lot may be half empty. During the, the busy times when the equipment is all out at the job site. Not to say there won't be something happening every day, but it's not. Every piece of equipment going and coming back. Probably the parking lot will be the fullest according to them in the winter time. When there's a lot less construction activity going on. And that's when, uh, a lot of the dump trucks and backhoes and excavators will be parked here. So, um, I, I think that means there will be less activity and less noise, um, than maybe. Some people might've assumed. Reg- regarding the buffering in the front, um, I really like what the town has done at the fire station down the street, as I mentioned. And, um, if you could pass these down.
Those, those photographs are in your package?
Photographs are in the package.
Yeah, they're in their packages.
Well, I just, I, I think these, uh, two rows of, uh, Arbivites staggered and packed closely together. Pretty effective screening, I think. Um, so, um, that, that is the, the current proposal. Now, want to talk a little bit, a little bit more about the, um. Proposed driveway. Cause there was some concern about the driveway. There was some talk about, you know, would the applicant consider. A one-way-in-only and have everybody go out through the complex. Uh, and you don't have these, cause I just drew up this plan today for presentation. So that's copies of this plan, which I call driveway sketch. Again, here's our new parking lot, proposed parking lot with 110 spaces. This is the driveway shown here in yellow that winds through the complex. Right now. There's about 102 spaces where, where trucks and cars park. Again, go net speed behind 24 New Park Drive that come out and use this, this drive. There's also 16 additional parking spaces on a lower level directly, um, adjacent to the drive. There's about 12 spaces, uh, in the front of 24 that come out. There's 20 spaces here for building 20 New Park Drive that come out and use this drive. And there's about 112 spaces here for this, um, building number 40 New Park Drive. It's not owned by the applicant, but it does share this common driveway. This, uh. Does aerospace coatings, I believe it's called, uh, um, Buddy? The Industries, okay. So there's about 112 spaces. Again, maybe they're not full every day, but there's, so there's 262. Parking spaces and vehicles that currently use this, this driveway. And, and these employees, um, and there's employees, you know, walking to the building as well. It's very important to the, the applicant and to, um, the tenant. That they have their own one-way-in and one-way-out and don't have to contribute 110 vehicles driving through and adding to the. It's a safety issue and adding to the, um, the traffic through, winding through the site. In addition, there's a fairly short, uh, queue line here, about 250 feet from the traffic light and the turnpike to the entrance of the existing drive. So it's, um, it's a safety issue and it's a functionality and it's very important that, that the one-way-in-one-way-out driveway be part of this proposal. And as, um, as I've stated before, you, you, you've heard from the DOT, they don't take exception to us having this driveway, proposed driveway as, as shown on the plan.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So you're proposing that, all right. My question is, these other businesses, this other 262 cars, what's to prevent them from looking at the queue and line for Park Road? And saying, hey, I'm just going to scoot on through over here and join the turnpike and go out using that exit?
Uh, we, we have a gate.
So you're going to gate them out of there? What, what happens with emergency vehicles and stuff? I mean. I don't think you can keep that gate closed between the businesses.
Well, this, this parking lot is for the exclusive use of NPL. It's not a public, it's not a public parking lot. It's not a parking lot for the, the other tenants and say, well, 20.
Oh, I, I understand the parking lot, but I'm saying they could easily use that as a shoot-on-through to the Berlin Turnpike. If they see that the queue is long on Park Drive or the wait to get onto Park Drive is long. So what's to prevent those other businesses from going back and just going directly on, cutting through and going on to the turnpike? But you're saying that you're going to gate it closed?
That, that's the intention.
All right. Well, thank you for answering my question. Yeah. I don't know.
Lot of people in these buildings. I mean, they don't have emergency services and gate it off. The gate can be opened. Do you have a crash?
Oh, yeah. Oh, gate, gate can be open. Cause that delays the fire service. Any gate delays fire service.
All right. Well, I wanted to ask that question while we were talking about it, but go ahead with your presentation.
There's no gate there. I suppose, um, some of these people might, might line up, but, but they, they can't go. They can't go in the other direction on the Berlin Turnpike. They would come out here and then you just come down to the same light. And I just, it doesn't, in my mind, if you're in a parking lot, so if you're in the parking lot here, are you going to want to wind your way through to go out here?
Yeah, well, my, my point was is that if there's a queue trying to get out to the parking lot, onto Park Drive, because all the businesses are leaving at the same time. Not only these, but the other ones across the road and up. So the, the temptation would be, I'm not going to sit in that queue. I'd rather scoot out this way, get to the light, and if I have to, I'll do a U-turn and come back down. But I'm not going to spend my day waiting in queue to get onto the Berlin Turnpike or onto Park Drive. That's, that's what my worst-case scenario is. Yeah. Oh, yeah. You can come, well, come on down and join the fun. No, no reason to be separate. We, we don't bite. Not yet. Uh, yeah.
Phone please, cause otherwise our tape doesn't pick it up.
Yeah.
Everybody has to speak into the microphone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Don Curiotti, 507 Brown's Call Ridge, Connecticut. Uh, currently this site offers no accessibility for any fire vehicle on the south side of the building. So it'd actually be a major improvement. So I would imagine that on the turnpike. That this gate would be fob accessible. And at many of our other properties, we have a fire box there and the fire department also has a key fob. I would assume that back here, this would be a fence, but if there were a gate, the same. Would apply where there would be a fire box on the exterior of the building. If it was an electric gate, then there would be a fob. But again, currently. This is all wooded, so there isn't 360-degree access for the fire department or emergency services. So this would potentially.
So, um, my one worry would be the gate that actually comes in off of the highway, um, instead of be fobbed. And I'm looking at, you got about maybe 40 or 50 feet and you're talking about 32-foot vehicles. Um, if you had two people pulling in at the same time and they had the fob to open the gate, that would stick the rear end of one of your, uh, vehicles out into the highway. So I mean, would that be, could you switch that to something that's like open during business hours and closed during the day? I understand that for security of your equipment.
I'm sure that we can ask, but it's 100 feet. There, there's 100 feet here up the road to this gate. Is, is you concerned that the 100 feet's not enough? That, that the, the gate is shown right here.
Yeah, and I see the 100-foot mark goes well beyond the gate into, uh, where it looks like it's pointing to the end of your, um. Retention pond there.
There's, uh, can I just say, there's another label, cause I noted it as well. There's another label right at the right of way that says gate.
This is the mistake.
Okay.
Gate is here, electronic gate.
Where, where is the gate?
Oh, it's for, okay.
I'm sorry, there's a, there's a, it's, it's further, so it's right here.
Oh, okay. Let me just.
The security fence comes around the detention basin on the south side of the entrance drive and then it's like here is where the gates.
Oh, okay.
You are correct. I have, I have the word gate here. My mistake.
Okay.
But it didn't get erased.
Raising it now.
Wait, so the gate, well, so the fence is where the blue line is? How is the, how could the gate be further south than the, than the?
Down here, I thought he said.
Yeah, well, with the, how could it be further? How could it be away from the fence? Maybe I'm not understanding.
Gate comes like this, then this is the fence.
Yeah.
Right here. And then it goes to the building.
Draw that line again, sir, Mr. Whitney.
I'm sorry.
Did, uh, point that out again. So the gate goes along the.
On the site.
Along the tree line.
Uh, the proposed tree line.
Proposed, yeah.
Behind, behind.
Yes. Okay, that's all right.
Then it comes down the south side of the entrance drive.
Okay.
Then it, the gate is located here.
But what's on the east? The other side, and you.
What's on this?
South. What about the, what about the?
The north side.
Well, the north, well, yeah. It's closing in the other side of the gate.
The gate goes to the building.
Okay, so it's connected to the building.
The fence connects to the building.
Okay, I, I understand. Thank you.
I'm sorry if it's not.
No, no, I, I. No, I get it now.
So there's, there's no pass-through in front along a parallel to the turnpike then? There's no pass-through there, right?
Well, there has to be, there, there, there'll be a gate, probably a gate here too for them.
An awful lot of gates on this property. Jeez Louise. Well, no, I understand, but I mean, but from a planning perspective, we have to look at all the different possibilities that can happen. So we just want to make sure that we understand. All these gates.
So the second gate is here.
Yep.
I mean, we, we could tweak this if there was that, on the better way.
Well, Tim, uh, Tim, you want to ask something now or what?
About parking. Awful lot of parking places in this development. With that said, you said 262 heading towards, uh, New Park. And we had the question, how do they go to, head towards the, uh. The new entrance here and exit there. I just look in here as splitting this basically development in half. Okay. And. The, the red one, 12, 16, 102, 110, okay. Two, 240. Parking place can head towards that new entrance. With, with, uh, 262 heading towards New Park. But that's an awful lot of traffic that, that wouldn't, when these factories would get out or businesses get out. Either way. You know, you're talking about, about, uh, stacking up at a light. There goes stack up. At a light on the Berlin Turnpike going out the new entrance. Or to go stack up on a, on a 250-foot of New Park. So I'm looking at this thing and saying, wait a minute, this, uh, you know. Parking areas, uh, you know, you got 400 and. 400, uh, 502 parking places in the whole thing. So you got 110 in here. And the new parking places, you have another, uh, 24, 21, 24, 15 added on there. Okay, you got the 12 that probably go back to 16 and 102. All could go towards the turnpike if that gate's open. Okay. It's a stack-up problem, period. Either out in the turnpike or out in New Park. A new, uh, new, uh, New Park. How would you control this, uh, stacking situation? Has the police department looked at the number of parking places and the exits of this property? Probably not. They look at the plan. They look at the wider, the width of the roads and they'll look at the entrance. Okay, but they probably won't add up all these parking places and, and see what happens. When the, the factories let out. And even if it wasn't, they're not all getting out and they're all, not all parking. You're still talking over 200 cars going out at the same time. You know, I, I'm wondering that, that the parking lots are not designed, the big parking lot to the south is not designed to our standards. And the parking places on these maps. That are existing parking places are not designated parking place, so they're not drawn on the map. Uh, and seeing the, the flow of traffic there. And Bud knee corporation leaving too. Okay. It's just a nightmare to, in, in, in vehicles. And you've got construction equipment, uh, trucks with construction, uh, equipment on them. And, uh. Outside storage, which is not allowed. At least the bins and stuff without our approvals. I see so much not addressed here as you talk. Not drawn on the map, not addressed. This map is not, to me, approvable because everything's not drawn on a map. I see a whole list of stuff from the engineering department, the planning commission and everything else that has not been addressed as of today. So I'm looking at all these, these things and I'm, I don't see anything that we can look at and know how to make a decision. Because it's not completed map. It's not a complete draw, drawing. And you could keep on saying, oh, the gate's over here. Okay, that's wrong. This is a new thing, possible future food trucks. Uh, that's a new thing.
Food court, yeah.
Food court. Uh, not food trucks, food court. Okay, that's a big difference. I don't have enough information here to really know, to approve something. I don't have enough information here to really know to approve something tonight because it's not drawn on the map. When the map is, is filed, any stipulations that you agreed to tonight at a meeting, a public meeting, okay? Would have to be on another page, okay? Agree, I agreed to this at these tonight because the commission said they got concerns about this, concerns about that, concern, whatever, whatever your condition, the conditions are. But without the map being drawn properly and the conditions that would be a, hopefully agreed to, okay? I saw way too much in here that I don't see going on here. You know, I, you know, because this is going to be combined lots, this is a whole development. So the buildings that are in this development, not already built, all that's got to be drawn on this map because you're combining the lots. That's a one project, all the lots got to be combined. I got to know how many parking places are on this twenty. You know.
Let's come on a rough, I'm just.
Yeah, okay, Maureen, yeah, Maureen.
Staff did guide some of the information that needed to be on the plan. And while there are a number of things we comment on as not as needing to be fixed on the plan as far as the existing conditions of the existing unified site plan for number forty, number twenty and number twenty-four, New Park Drive. We were that, you know, whether that meets current regulations or not, it met the regulations at the time that that was all built out. And therefore, without those areas being changed and no additions with regard to any of that being changed, none of the information for the existing parking areas, except for the one immediately behind twenty-four was asked for because those are all built out and the commission, the town hasn't, doesn't have the authority to have him change any nonconformities that might exist.
Well, I'm not.
Conditions.
I'm not asking.
Conditions that would be if, if they are nonconforming. However, we did state to him that, or to them, that they had to provide for any spaces they were displacing. And therefore, they show the standard sized places and as noted, some of those standardized spaces, standard sized spaces have to be for the displaced parking in the main area of the lot. Other than that, as far as parking drives and the configuration of that lot, we were looking at this as additional, in addition to the existing conditions. So if the commission would want additional information, then we'd have to, you know, we'd approach it, but the applicant certainly was not given that guidance as that was existing.
I, I do agree with you that the existing approval, we wouldn't have anything to do because that's existing, any nonconformities on that. Though existing is not in this proposal. But it does affect when I say, okay, we have this many parking places, where are they leaving out to out and where they go, how they go exit this project? When you're combining the project lot lines and combining the project into one, how does new parking places, the new design affect the old design? Okay, does it allow for those extra parking places to exit, going that way? It does combine, when you're combining the lots, it does combine the project. Any approvals, you're right, that, that is there and nonconforming, those are approved by a commission somewhere down a long time ago.
Eighty-six was the last.
Yeah, yeah. It was a long time ago, but.
Yeah, of course, of course, yeah, we want to hear from you.
Let me, um, couple of things. There were several questions in there. The food court is not part of this project. It's something the applicants talked about, put it on the plan as a possible future, just because I don't see any harm in showing something that perhaps in talking to Maureen, she wanted it taken off the plans because she doesn't want any confusion about what's being approved.
Exactly.
Tonight.
Yeah.
Exactly.
So we can scratch that off your plan too.
Scratch that off. That's easy.
Easy.
Driveway here.
Yeah.
Made sense to us, but we, instead of bringing all this new traffic through the site, why not divide it up and have the new traffic come out onto the Berlin Turnpike? I mean, this is an existing situation now, it's busy, but it works. If you add a hundred and ten, and again, these aren't every day, people in and out.
Understood.
But, but if you add additional traffic, it's just going to make it busier, less desirable. So doesn't a second driveway make sense? And again, the DOT doesn't have an issue with it. So it just, it just made sense to us to do it and it was it seemed like a, a common sense thing to do.
May I say something?
Yes, Ms. Millard.
I understand what you're saying, but anybody who travels on the Berlin Turnpike, and I've lived in that area my entire life, and the traffic that comes from Meriden down toward Berlin, they come at a very fast clip. And if you're going to get, I don't know what size vehicle is going to be pulling out of there, but if it, if it has any weight behind it, it's going to take some time to get it out onto the Berlin Turnpike and get going. I personally think that if they went down New Park where they had the safety of the traffic light, where they have a green light to get out onto the Berlin Turnpike safely, would be their advantage and to your advantage. And it's the safety of the highway for everybody, not just the trucks or cars or whatever are in here, but personally, I think exiting out onto the Berlin Turnpike in this area is unsafe.
Thank you.
Is that based on accident data, is it based on opinions from?
Did you ever travel it?
I, I've been to the site a dozen times. I find that there's large gaps in the traffic.
Well.
I mean, and I have a little car, it's not, it's not very fast.
Did you do a traffic study of that, at that entrance?
No.
Okay, so we don't know.
Has one been required or asked for?
So, so we don't know.
No. Wait, wait, no, actually, no.
Public meeting, you.
It's not a public, it's just commission business at this point.
Oh, it's not public, okay, I'm sorry.
Let me, let me do a little more talking on the traffic.
Yeah.
Because Maureen had asked for some type of chart or something to show how the parking on this site has evolved. And let me pass these out. Again, this was a sketch I drew up today. This plan here, I added on a new parking lot here, but this plan here is the nineteen eighty-four approved plan when the buildings were first built. And on this plan, they show these parking spaces for building number twenty, New Park Drive, they're shown here in blue, twenty spaces. I'm guessing because the building was twenty thousand square feet, they put in one space per thousand square feet. There, there's no, nothing in the chart that says how these numbers were calculated. This, this approved plan in nineteen eighty-four also showed eighty-one spaces shown here in orange for building twenty-four New Park Drive. That was, that was the original approved plan. At some point over time, and we don't know exactly when, additional parking spaces were added for twenty-four New Park Drive, a total of sixty new spaces. I went back and I looked at all the, the old, older photos on your GIS site in two thousand and four was as far back as we went. These spaces were, were there at that time. Now, to put in the sixty green spaces, they had to take out eleven orange spaces for the driveways and for the reconfiguration. So there was really a net gain of forty-nine spaces. In fact, I probably should have asked this one too. This just shows over time what's happening. So when these space, these spaces were added, you're unknown. The total was twenty spaces for new, number twenty, New Park Drive, that didn't change. There were a hundred and thirty spaces for twenty-four New Park Drive. Then at some point in time, the tenant here in twenty-four New Park Drive started using outdoor storage and basically eliminating sixteen parking spaces as we've talked about before. So then, at that point in time, and this is item three in my letter or my email, twenty New Park Drive had twenty spaces and twenty-four had a hundred and fourteen spaces. And then with our current proposal here, adding on for twenty-four New Park Drive, again, a hundred and ten new spaces, twenty New Park Drive would have the same original twenty spaces and twenty-four New Park Drive would have two hundred and twenty-four spaces. I don't know if that's helpful or not, but in my mind, it certainly says that, you know, most of the time you're concerned, is there enough parking? Here, I think we're adding a considerable amount of parking, you know, as, as needed by the tenant. Maybe I can ask Donnie to explain what's going to happen with empty out if the parking lot isn't approved.
Before, before you do that, I just want to talk about this because we're talking about adding parking spaces, subtracting, relocating. Was all of that done on the nineteen eighty-four plan?
No.
So you had a nineteen eighty-four plan and then, correct me if I'm wrong, but what I'm hearing is that as you had this plan that was approved, then what happened is people started saying, well, I don't really need that much spacing, I kind of need it for storage, so I'm going to clear that out. I'm not going to use it for parking, I'm going to put storage here and I'm going to vent parking spaces someplace else, but we really don't need them. So now we're down sixteen, now we're adding twenty. Is, is that sort of what happened? Is that these businesses sort of juxtaposing their, their parking spaces?
Well, well.
Without an approval?
I don't know. Well, that was all early two thousands.
So in the early two thou, so again, what I was asking is that this nineteen eighty-four plan, not, I'm just trying to keep the thread straight in my head. So in the nineteen eighty-four plan, I'm wondering when all of this was shifting around with the parking spaces, what year was it approved by the commission? To get, to arrive at where we are today, that's.
If I may.
Yeah.
So we weren't able to find that information as to whether there were additional plans that came in after, you know, with the the, the main concern from the zoning statistics concern was when the buildings were built at a certain square footage, what was the parking that was required for those square footages? So that's the number we were dealing with. We then found that there's been some modifications, they're not extremely elaborate modifications, but there were some modifications. But you may recall that we have some site plans that were destroyed or not kept well because of things that happened at Town Hall, including a flood at one point. And we don't have a plan, we can't tell if there was P and Z approval for modifications to the plans or an administrative approval. We're relying on the building department's record and the one, the record they have is the one that deals with when the buildings were built. They don't necessarily get a plan updated if, into their files, filing system, if it didn't come with a building permit.
And then.
A building permit was required and for parking, it wouldn't be.
Yeah.
So we couldn't find that, but we could find what has been there for a very long time through looking at aerial views. And Mr. Cariotti commenting that it was at least the early two thousands, we found something from the nineteen nineties that was close configurations and, you know, what, I've, it happens all the time that a pay, a parking lot gets paved and the parking layout gets modified marginally. And that's just, we, nobody has the staff to keep up with that.
Yeah, and there's no minutes on the meetings.
Keep having those, you know, that a plan gets, gets restripped through the plan that was approved in the eighties. Yeah, we tried for it, but you know, we don't always know when somebody restripes. He repaves and restripes and certainly since the eighties, I'm sure the parking lot's been redone a couple of times. But the last record plan we found was the eighty.
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four site plan, and that was the last record site plan. Again, we didn't find another file in our office for it or the parcel.
And there were no notes on any minutes? No references from minutes.
I'm not sure we searched for all the minutes, you have to.
No, I just.
Now.
Yeah, I.
All the minutes, it's.
You know, just to go back to Mr. Zig.
Think we did that.
Yeah, just to go back to Mr. Zigman's point is that we're, we're starting with, I don't know what we're starting with anyway. It, it just seems that we're, we're trying to, we're trying to help you expand your business, but on the same, in the same note, we have to be mindful of the existing businesses and the weight that comes with it. So that's what we're weighing out here, okay?
So, yes, which is why the applicant doesn't want to send these new vehicles through the existing parking lot and make the situation worse. That's why the parking lot is separate and why there's a, a new proposed driveway on, on the Berlin Turnpike that DOT has has not had any objection to.
Have they commented at all? Or is it, or is there, is the DOT saying to you, come to us after they approve the plan?
Well. We had a full meeting.
Thank you, Jim.
No, that's all right.
Full meeting out there with engineers from the DOT, I think it was five or six person crew that came out, planning, engineering. We explained exactly what we were doing, they were on full support, they didn't feel any need for a merge lane coming out of the right out of the traffic light based upon that it really isn't a ton of cars compared to the Leonard, to the depot, or those larger lots of the turnpike, it's very minor for them. The other thing that we asked about the traffic study, and they said there really wasn't a need for one because it was so big.
All right, so let me ask you, if you, if you keep this entrance to the Berlin Turnpike and exit, and the truck has to go southbound on the turnpike, is he going to the New Park Road and then turning, doing a U-turn?
Okay, there, yes, go up to, I think it's past the bowling alley, or it used to be the bowling alley, in front of Peterville. Unless in front of Tyler Equipment, they may be able to do a U-turn.
They're not going to be able to do a U-turn at metal lane.
Yeah, so they'd have to go north.
Firehouse.
Is he going to Irving?
By the firehouse, no.
You can't do a U-turn at Irving?
You'd have to go all the way to the fire.
And the other thing that I don't, I don't think that was.
I don't want him on, I don't want him on Orchard.
This is the fifth, one of this building, the game wall, but I don't think there's enough room to get a driver and trailer, any size.
So when you say tractor trailer, were you talking about maximum length? Truck and trailer?
It was originally designed for this area for passenger vehicles to park. So between the end of the retaining, the end of the retaining wall in the corner of the building is not a huge amount of room.
Okay, got it, I got it.
All right.
Let me just say one more.
Okay, yes.
I just wanted a little, little clarification and I'll ask Maureen, but when a project like this comes in and they're merging properties and they bring a, a plan to us, which shows us all the properties merged together, okay? When they bring in the plan, it now opens up the whole piece of property, okay? And if we wanted to make a change to this driveway going out. And if we wanted to make a change to this driveway going out or whatever, we have the, the prerogative to do that because now the whole project has been opened up as one, okay? If it was just this lot over here, now we're addressing only parking places and everything else on this lot. But once we got a plan that shows the whole project, like the plan right there, it opens up the whole project to our discretion. And like I said, it's approved project years ago. If there was different things allowed now because it was made in nineteen eighty-four and our zoning regulations have changed, okay? We probably have the right to now update it to today's zoning because now the whole project's came in. The whole land, three hundred, three point six acres, whatever it is, okay? Uh, and that's my opinion, and I think that's what we've done hi- historical wise when a project like this comes in and combines, okay? Uh, that's why, that's why you've been bringing in these plans with new, uh, where the park places are showing us where everything is and we're making decisions with, uh, two hundred sixty-two parking places on this part of the property over here because it has opened it up now as one project. Uh, that's just, uh, what happens when you bring combined properties together. So, I gotta say.
Um, help me out here. Um, we approved three pieces into one parcel, but that's all south of building twenty-four, isn't it? We didn't, the combination wasn't to the right on the map, but it was just the new parking space, the new storage space in the lot below, right?
The land, yeah. That wasn't with the project.
You have to look at the minutes as to what was agreed to. It's, it's, um, I believe that when they started their presentation, they said that they would be merging the three parcels that were rezoned.
Yes.
All, just the parcels.
Yes.
South of building twenty-four, but not, um, merging it with twenty-four and twenty. The lot that contains twenty-four and twenty was a separate, is a separate lot. I, but I, again, I'd have to look at those minute, I.
But that was my understanding too.
Not what the paperwork is saying.
So have a provision.
I just read it.
Um, that I'm actually just looking for, which is the, um, if there's a provision to, um, or where, how to quote it. Um, but there's a provision about parking on an adjacent lot to a use and tie it to it. And, um, as they stated, this, or as I stated earlier with regard to the number of spaces, um, this is in excess of what they're required. That's what these spaces are. It's a parking lot in excess of their requirement.
Okay.
And, and that's how it was analyzed. Um, you know, um, Mr. Zigmont has given a different perspective than what, how I did my analysis.
I, I just, I just read in here that this new lot is being combined in this paperwork somewhere. I'm looking for it right now.
I asked if they were being, yeah, I did. I said something about combining it.
Yeah, right, and, and you said it had to be on the site plan.
Wasn't, and it has to be, I, I, sorry if I worded it. I meant that I wanted them to clarify what their intent was.
Well, that's, that's the indications I got from them first meeting is that they're being combined.
I did say something about combining and I intended it to say.
Okay.
Um, that they should clarify because I do, um, and I, as long as we're on that, kind of that same subject, um, I do think in the record, they should, um, confirm that whether or not they intend to be abandoning the residential uses that were on this property.
Yeah.
I'll look for that note again.
Brian?
Yeah, I just read that.
Um, Brian, what, oh.
Can I say one thing?
Yes.
See in the, um, zone change map here, these are the three lots, um, where the zone was changed to PI. And there's a note here, three existing parcels to be merged with twenty-four New Park Drive. Total area proposed zone change is three point four five eight acres. This site is about three acres, so this would be about a six acre lot. These three lots merged with twenty-four, but twenty-four was not to be merged with twenty. And certainly nothing that's going to be merged with forty.
No, but it, no, but it not, no. But, but it, it is be, if you're saying now it's going to be merged to twenty-four, uh, for parking lots for twenty-four, right?
That's what we sense that very, very.
Okay.
Sorry, I misspoke.
Okay, then probably twenty shouldn't be in, uh, being addressed here uh, because if that's a different lot, okay? But the merger of those three lots with twenty-four does bring all those four lots into effect. Uh, you know, because you're merging the lots together. So all of twenty, the building twenty-four plus the park place, whatever twenty-four had, and the three lots that were zone changed, uh, are being merged together, okay? Uh, and with the maps that we have, you're showing building twenty with this whole project right there, that map up there. So, so it's all in one thing. There's no lot line between twenty and twenty-four. It's all one lot.
There, there is a lot line between twenty and twenty-four. That was a unified site plan in nineteen eighty-four.
Okay, okay, well.
I, I mean, I don't have a full.
Well, twenty and twenty-four was, oh, twenty and twenty-four was a uni- unit, unit together. And now the, the new lots are coming onto twenty and twenty-four. So it does bring in the whole project if you're saying that.
This, this is a sketch that I thought would be helpful to illustrate what's happened over time to the parking spaces. It's not meant to show this is all one.
Oh, to make the. But.
But when we started this project, I thought the drainage was going to be the biggest concern. And usually it is when you put a lot of impervious surface. So we designed a detention basin that would contain the one inch water quality volume, actually would also contain two inches and, and, and would handle the hundred year flow. And we got, uh, the, the town engineer has no issues with it. DOT has no issues with it, so we have, um, a drainage plan, which I thought was going to be your biggest concern. I was not aware that, that there was going to be this level of concern about these other properties, but, um, I hope there's not that much that is not on the plans. Uh, the town engineer wants some details added and he said he takes no exception to be a condition of approval to add some details.
I under, I understand that a hundred percent. The town, the town, uh, staff, uh, is, is there to advise us, uh, with the final decisions about anything is this commission here, okay? Now, if I just found out by your words and Maureen's that twenty and twenty-four was a combined property, uh, back in these other approvals, and now we're taking these three lots and combining with twenty twenty-four, now this is the whole project like you show here, okay? That's, that's what the, 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 it's not being understood, I guess. Is that because the lots were combined before and now you're adding some more land to it, it's all one big project. The driveways are, the entrance driveways, the exit driveways. Everything is all one project. That's why you showed it on the major map that you brought, the, the roll of maps, whichever this one. Right? The roll of maps, uh, are all the properties combined. So when you did that.
I never did that.
You did. Had the, the original map come in with that map right there, okay? The, the boundary lines of that map right there came in originally.
Your point is taken.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 don't be sorry.
But, but I'm just trying to. Okay, no problem. No problem. Cut me off anytime you want. I have that no problem. I have no problem at all. I have no problem at all. You shut me down if I go too much.
I'm going to move it to something a little easier. Um.
Thank you.
And I have no problem with the chain link fence around seventy-five percent of this. It was just during the public hearing, one of the things that the neighbors spoke up against was having a solid fence, even with the privacy screening in those slots, a chain link fence is still, um, you can still see through it quite a bit. So, um, would you have any, um, would you be opposed at all to, you know, at least on the southern side of the parking lot, taking that chain link fence and turning it into like an eight foot, you know, wooden or vinyl fence? Just to give them that screening?
I'd ask Donnie to answer that question.
Yeah, but they need the security for their equipment.
Yes, I want to just like to clarify, so that would be in place of the double row of trees?
No, 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 in the, no, uh, so I see on the south side between you and the residential, you're keeping it to one row of trees and you have chain link fence. I'm saying maybe for, instead of putting chain link fence in that one section, um, do a solid fence, either wood or vinyl. That way it's one hundred percent opaque. Um, be, yeah, because I mean, even when you have the chain link, you put the privacy slots in it, you can still see through it quite a bit.
What about a double row of trees in the chain link fence?
I, I would.
Yeah, if you could, if you could do the double row of trees, that would work, yeah.
You'd, you'd do the Berlin Firehouse double row of trees, line all things.
I didn't know if you could fit the double row. The double row would.
Anyway, which we thought would help the neighbors.
Yeah.
Cause we want to be respectful for the neighbor.
Well, that's, yeah, that's another question that you just brought up.
I guess my other thing is, um, trucks and trailers, no, I mean, you said some bigger equipment here and there, but you're not going to be having like, uh, tractor trailer trucks and everything coming into this property hitting there.
Shouldn't be any, i- if so, very rarely to maybe pick something up or deliver it.
Okay.
But not, uh, my understanding to house there.
I'm just worried about making it a common occurrence where all of a sudden now in front of this house to the south, you have tractor trailer trucks hitting their Jake brakes in front of their house all the time. Okay. All right, we got double row trees.
Yep. June, you had a comment?
I'll, I'll pen it for now.
Well, all right. Mr. Dyken, to the all the way to the left.
I, I just wanted to follow up on what Commissioner Miller, uh, her concern about the act, about access to the Berlin Turnpike. I mean, do you not understand the, the concern? Um, you know, I, I think if you have a large industrial commercial vehicle, I mean, regulated by the traffic light on New Park Drive, that's, that's beneficial. I mean, it's hard, it's hard to argue that. I mean, you were sort of pushing back on us like, well, where's your proof? I, I don't know what more proof do we need than that explanation? I mean, someone's going to slam their brakes on, on the Berlin Turnpike and you're not going to, you know, the sedan behind them may not anticipate it. At least you have the light at New Park Ave.
And they can.
Roll on it.
Yeah. Go ahead, sir. Thank you, appreciate it.
I completely understand the concern, the safety standpoint. Um, I think again, the problem is, is fitting around the building. I am a contractor from the D, for the DOT, uh, probably the largest winter contractor in the state. I've been working with them for over thirty years on various projects, road projects, uh, heavy highway projects. And when it comes to the DOT, they have every, every T cross and every I dotted. So when we met with them and this was a concern, they said, we get it, we understand, however, we have done our due diligence and our studies. And yes, I, I, I could see the point, however, when they gave the green light, then I was okay with it because I know that they've done the traffic studies.
Question, would they, would they allow you to have a decrease, um, um, what do they call it? Decreased speed, uh, lane?
Acceleration.
Deceleration lane before that driveway?
I don't think that we, we did bring that up and we even brought up an acceleration lane. And they said that they didn't feel that there was a need. Um, I don't know if the, the, the deceleration with the south side, if something about distance and room, but.
I'm just worried about a truck coming at fifty, fifty-five miles an hour and all of a sudden saying, oh, I have to turn here. And as he breaks to make that turn, because I'm not sure. I mean, I've been past the lot several times and it looks like it's pretty quick. So I'm wondering, uh, is that vehicle going to have to come to basically a stop on the turnpike to negotiate coming back in?
Supposed to flow no differently than at the traffic light. So it's, it, they should be slowing down to a safe speed. However, this curb cut is far wider than what's there and we're actually eliminating one.
How, how much wider? Twice as wide?
I don't.
Times as wide?
But this one here?
Yeah.
Yeah, how wide is that? Cause I, I can't see any numbers on this, hold on.
That's, that's helpful to know because to your point, that would at least, you could see a curb cut well before you. Yeah.
How much?
Ninety-five feet.
Oh, really?
This is from here to here.
Oh, oh, that's not even, no, I'm talking about the actual driveway coming into the, if you're coming northbound, yes, that curve right there. How wide is that?
Yeah, right.
That's, that's my concern is how much does this?
No, no, I want to know.
Forty feet.
All right, so it's forty feet each way. You have any landscaping in that?
I mean, okay, I understand.
We can make this as well, as you have there.
You have any landscaping in that little island? Where the?
I would say no, that's like people in it. Like it's like.
I make it do. It's not the same as an intersection with traffic light. I'm not saying, you, you made your point, I get it. I appreciate your point about the curb cut, but say it's the same because, I mean, the car behind the truck is not going to know that the truck is actually going to, to the same extent that they would have the warnings of a traffic.
Yeah.
That's all, that's what I'm saying. The curb cut, that's a pretty wide curb cut. I, I appreciate that.
Right, great, but, but then again, we have traffic light, everything.
It's just the, the Berlin Turnpike is pretty unique. It's not the Chamberlain Highway, it's not other stuff.
I, I also, the entrance that they're talking about, I know. That, that's fine for me. I drive a large vehicle every day. But when the large trucks are going to take a right on turnpike, go northbound, they're coming out of that driveway at a very slow speed because they're shifting up through the gears, okay? And they're going to get in that lane going ten, fifteen miles an hour. You're going up through the gears, okay? The vehicles coming down the northbound side are going to be going fifty-five miles an hour. So when they come on, you know, all of a sudden there's a truck going real slow in front of them. The traffic light is a different thing because all the traffic on the turnpike stops.
Well, some of it does.
Now the trucks will turn that out.
Yeah.
Ninety percent of the vehicles coming out of there are pickup trucks.
Or they could be back to trailer trucks.
They could be triaxal dump truck. Now we just brought ten new ten person to our fleet and I can tell you right now, they have absolutely no problem coming up to speed. And I'm a little guy, this is big on the radar and this is a national company, so I can tell you that all their equipment is probably.
And.
Random.
Diane.
Thank you. Um, initially, when we were, uh, in the last meeting, I said that, um, I was in agreement uh, with Commissioner Zigmont with respect to directing traffic to New Park Drive. But I think I didn't have an understanding for the volume of vehicles that we were talking about. But as I'm listening to the conversation, the volume of vehicles, a certain percentage of those vehicles are trailers or they're not motorized, they're going to be in tow, right? So it's not like a hundred, I forget the number. It's not like, um, all of those vehicles are under their own power going out. So your numbers actually coming and going kind of are less in my view. But I'm also thinking of the, um, traffic in and out of this proposed new driveway, um, in comparison to other businesses all along the turnpike. Um, trucks come and go from businesses all the time. Um, so that part I see as being up to DOT to make the determination as to whether or not it meets the safety criteria that they evaluate for all of these other projects that we look at as well, that don't have the traffic light.
I, I guess my concern with that was if, if somebody in one of the other businesses decides to go out that way, what's to prevent them? You know what I mean, it's, it's, uh, that was my concern. But now you put gates up, so. All right, Ryan, you had something?
And just to dovetail off Commissioner Juris' point, as I understand it, that gate next to Building twenty-four is to prevent, you know, let's say bun, bunnies employees from using your parking lot to get onto the highway, it's not to say your employees can't, okay, you still go to New Park if they want to.
Sorry, lost you.
They could still leave through that gate to go to New Park, if so they chose. It's the, the.
I don't think so, I think because they would like, they, they, they need to have this secured lot.
No, okay, there'd be just a big chain on it?
If it, if, if there, if it was asking, if the board asked that there'd be a gate there.
Yeah.
It would be a lock gate.
I didn't know if it had a fob on it.
Well, may, maybe.
Yeah. I was just thinking like, okay, maybe your guys did have a big tractor and trailer bringing an excavator or something out, and they're like, oh, I don't wanna use it.
Who would venture to say that? Best case scenario, it would just want a fence. It would alleviate everything.
Diane, did you have a follow up question?
Um, two.
All right.
Um, so, um, the plan, the larger, the larger plan, um, the updated plan, you're showing these, um, containment areas for different materials and pallets. Yeah, and then, um, okay, then on your driveway sketch, um, in the small font, it says no outdoor storage of manufactured goods or construction materials is proposed. So, it's, um, in the fine print on your driveway sketch dated September fourth, I, I just see it as kind of contradictory?
It is, because that was, uh, the, that's right. FPL's request to have these three bins and some areas with pallets, there's a last minute thing, I didn't change that note.
Okay.
If the note was original, there was to be no outdoor storage. Because we didn't consider vehicles as outdoor storage. And these three bins and the area for the pallets was not something that they brought up at that point in time. But that's, that's, that note last year.
But you have outdoor storage down here that's been used as outside storage. Another spot that is outside storage. Yeah.
Yes.
So, so there is outside storage on the property, two places. So I, that note shouldn't be there, uh, at all, because.
Nope. Originally, we weren't gonna have any outdoor storage in the front. And, and originally, we were mainly dealing with this portion of the property. And it was, the plan has evolved, evolved, evolved. Yeah, so, um, that note is not correct. I will take it off the plan. We have some very small amount of outdoor storage here, again, three bins, sanding, gravel, pallets.
Okay. I think it's three questions now. Okay. Um, so, uh, one of the questions also I wanted to ask about, I don't see anything, um, sorry, I didn't have my mic on. Um, I don't see anything, uh, identifying where there might be dumpsters located, is there a need for dumpsters?
Not for the new car. I don't know where the dumpsters are on the site, and we don't. I have not been made aware of any additional dumpster space needed.
Okay, I just wanna keep that away, if they're needed, I guess that they need to be shown somewhere, but I would want to see those away from the residential, um, line. And then the last, I think it's maybe my last question. Um, we were copied on a letter, um, from the Berlin Land Trust concerning, um, totes that were at the back of the property, what's in those?
Honest answer? Not a damn clue. I didn't even know they were there. So tomorrow morning, that's my first thing, figure out what we'll probably have safety clean, go up and test them, I'm guessing that they're, they've, uh, whoever took those pictures had, clearly walked up to them, which should have come, but whatever. Uh, I'm guessing they probably have no caps on them, it's supposed to water. Uh, but we will find out, and I few moved and they're remediated immediately. This letter just came in the South.
Oh. Yeah.
If. If they're commissioners of the town of Berlin Wetlands, or whatever commissioner, uh, they do have the right to walk up there into the wetlands.
I think it was a neighbor.
Oh, whatever, whoever, but, uh, it was the wetlands that sent the letter, right?
No, Berlin Land Trust.
A land trust, still same difference.
Taking care of that first.
Okay. I think I'm done.
And one last question I have, regarding the landscaping to the front of the building. So, uh, or the front of the project. So, the landscaping, the level rows that you're up along the Berlin Turnpike, now how far is that landscaping gonna carry on through? And will there be a grassed area between those rows of trees to the turnpike itself?
This area here is state land.
You can't plant grass?
It's currently grass, the intention is to leave it.
Okay, and then on the other side, northbound to that? It's grass, how far will your trees go? Your double spaced arbivorous or whatever?
Well, I'm, I'm just.
Are they, are they?
Like to the edge of the build. About hundred, two hundred forty feet, whether it be the exception of the driveway.
Okay.
So, so here, here is the, the south side of the building, we'll go a little past them.
Okay, are, do you have any intention of continuing the row of arbivorous, um, through to the end of the property? Perhaps? To dress out the whole property?
Pretty, it's not quite the way it is, I think. It's.
You mean the mound of dirt?
Well, that, not the, not the buildings. Okay, the mound of dirt are here. Are here, this is all landscape now.
That's all landscape now?
All landscape.
Okay.
I mean, it'll be disturbed when we put this pipe in, and, and.
You're gonna relance.
National condition, long living, not seen the grass.
All right. Good. Tim.
Yeah, the, the commissioner just brought up the fence here on the, towards the residential properties. Uh, and we're asked, he was asking for a solid type fence. Uh, and then during that conversation, it was said the berm's not gonna be there, the three foot berm's not gonna be there now.
Wait, oh, no, I thought.
He, he just said he's gonna eliminate it.
Wait, I thought, I heard there was a berm.
There is a berm.
Yes.
Okay, you said there's berm, uh, okay, I, if I heard long, I heard long.
I said we would bring a three foot berm there to eliminate the view of the.
Yeah, to assist, because you're supposed to do, the chain link, the double staggered.
And I'm assum- assuming you want a waiver of our double row of trees.
No.
We're gonna, we're gonna modify, make a double row along here.
Okay, because it's not shown on any of the maps, so there's, you know, wrote on, on the map, and you put the double rows on the front, but you didn't put it on that, that wall side.
I need to sell that one.
Okay.
And has offered that.
Okay, that's, thank you. We're happy with that.
Yep. And Ms. Miller?
I can go ahead.
Or Rogan, or some, one of you guys, whoever wants to go first, ladies before gentlemen, let's go.
Some clarification, I know our last meeting, we, I don't know if it was disapplication, or there was some pictures of mounds of, uh, woodchips that were encroaching or on the wetlands. And, um, they were pretty large mounds, like a mountain, so I was just wondering if anything has been done with those.
Jip Sahoy?
From the enforcement standpoint, I'll let you know that the staff, including the wetlands agent, immediately went out, and they agreed that they, they, um, right before the last meeting, um, Mr. Whitney went out and measured how much of that, um, um, mound was encroaching into the upland review area, and they've been ordered to pull it back off that. It's, it's not a, um, very big proportion of the mound that is in the wetland area, he could, he might remember.
It's twelve feet of, twelve feet of this.
Yeah.
One location here, this woodchip pile.
And it's twelve feet. And that's in the upland review area.
Well, last week, I, I had told Maureen that we plan on moving an excavator there next week, as soon as that arrives. We'll do that, and then we're gonna be demolishing that house.
Yeah, go, go out here.
Yeah, and, um, yeah, the wetlands agent has been going, and he's, he's gone out a couple of times. And I went out with him on one of the trips, and I think Paulie's scheduled to go out with him on another. And it is, and to clarify, because I think there was some confusion about it last week, that is in the upland review area as opposed to within the wetland itself.
The fifty foot.
So, um, our staff earlier asked, and just, just for clarification for the record, are you planning to abandon the residential use of those three lots entirely?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Well.
Can I make a few comments?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, going back to that, the, the trees along the front property line, double row of trees, the way they're shown on the plan, they do, one, one row is on the state property, and one row is on, on this property. And, um, that is subject to DOT's approval for those being planted within their right of way. So, um, I think there should be a little bit of discussion about whether they can be pushed back onto, entirely onto the property, and/or if the commission would be satisfied if the DOT does not allow the row of plantings within, on their space, or they end up getting, the, the, um, concern I see with pushing them back is, and I'm staring at the screen rather than the plan, because the plan's not there anymore, but is, um, that his detention basin is just adjacent to it, and I, he, I would have to defer to the engineer as to whether that would work for him to move it further into the lot. Um, but again, and on that same note, um, Alexa did bring up on the screen the existing view of the, um, of, of their landscaping in front of the building that you asked about.
Okay.
And that's just the landscape question, I have some other things.
To respond to that, yes, we can easily slide, um, the detention basin and the landscaping a few feet onto the site to remove the trees from the states right away.
Good. And what was your other comment?
Um, well, I was just gonna go through some of the notes I have in the staff report, I realized you didn't have, um, a long time to, um, analyze it. So, um, but as, as you said, it's been a plan and transition for many days, and, um, working to satisfy comments that we've been making from the town standpoint throughout. Um, I will note that I did, um, during the conversation, double check the comments we got back from um, the varying commenting departments, and um, I did talk to the traffic officer who did not immediately recall that he reviewed the plan, which means that the trap, that the comments that came back from the police department would have come from the police chief or someone else he, he gave them to, as well as the police commission made no comment on the plans. So I just wanted to point that out, I did check as to who, because I wanted to have that further.
Maureen, can we just, can we just clarify that the police commission is, is not, it's, they're not, it's not the police commission? Maybe it's the chair is maybe reviewing it individually. But I'm on the police commission, and I can assure you, it's never before the police commission.
The plans don't come there.
I believe they go to whatever authority has been granted that right by the police department.
Somebody's reviewing.
Police commission, I do think.
Someone's reviewing.
The chair that looks at them.
And that's, I just wanna clarify for the record.
Police department standpoint, um, it's been my experience that either the chief or the traffic officer looks.
Or the chairman, or someone, that's, that's.
Now route one set of plans in the traffic report down to the department, because there was a disconnect of, of the full set of materials not going to what needed to, so now we send them to the chief's office.
And that's.
He disseminates them as, under his purview.
And that's, that's totally fine, I just want the record to be clear, if anybody's gonna look at the minutes at the police commission wondering what, what we were doing, they're not gonna find it, all right, thank you.
Okay. Um, the, um, me, me forget what's the other thing was. Let me look at my minutes and my notes for a second. Um, I wonder the um, again, in my staff comments, um, I would, um, ask that you adopt the comments, um, that are still relevant, a couple of them have gotten knocked off by virtue of, um, discussion today, and I added, um, what I'll call eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. Fourteen being, or one of them being the berm with the double row and chain link along that southerly line, you know, just clarifying what was agreed to. Um, the plan be changed, uh, be modi-, uh, be corrected, so the note with regard to the approved, any approved outside storage be accurate. Um, any dumpsters that may be added will require zoning review, um, for screening and location, and at that time, we'll determine whether the commission wants to see it, or or, um, or you'll allow staff to handle it. Um, and to revisit the gate. Um, any gate have emergency access to the satisfaction of the fire marshal, which would be typical of any of the, um, areas in town where you're asked for a security gate, the fire marshal reviews it with the, I believe he calls it a knock box. And that's, then, and he reviews those, and, uh, demands that they have access. Um, see. On the, the, again, in here already is that the possible future food court area, including the parking, the curbing and pavement be removed from the plan. And I think that's it. Just one thing.
Yes, Diane?
Uh, one thing also that's, um, been requested, that's not part of staff comments, um, is the request for a waiver from the regulations, um, for parking lot markings and landscaped islands. So we have to decide on that.
But, uh.
Oh, it's him, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, I'm, my question is for the internal gate here, the, not the exit, the gate, the internal gate. Uh, why that's necessary, uh, with another knock box? Or, or, uh, gated, keyed gate? I don't, I don't care, I don't worry about the key gate, but but, uh, I do have a key for that, but, but the, uh, the gate there, I don't think it's necessary. Uh, and that leave up to the plan, uh, the fire marshal, but I would like to see him address that gate too.
Okay, yeah, I, I that's fine. Thank you. Fine.
Anything else? Anyone else? Permission? Who will address everyone's concerns? All right. Well. Okay. That we need to vote on. Yeah, he needs to vote. All right, so. So I'm looking for a motion, seeing that we have no other questions or concerns at this time. Would anyone like to step up and make a motion?
I'll make, I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion to approve the site plan with all of our staff comments, including the ones that were just mentioned tonight. Um, and also with the engineering department, and any other department that, uh, has requests such as the fire marshal dealing with the gates. Um, I want to pay special attention to the southern property line, that we get those two rows of, uh, trees and plantings for the additional screening along with the privacy fence. Um, and, uh, yeah, I'll leave my motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second, do we have further discussions?
This is a discussion that I would like to see because there's a lot of changes that have to be made on this, these maps. And we pointed out a lot of, a lot of things tonight. Uh, if approval is made, I would like to see a full set of plans come back to this commission before we reveal that all those items are on there before they're filed with the.
Town clerk.
Town clerk.
Okay.
I'll amend my motion to include that um, condition.
Okay, amend the second.
I would trust staff to do that, but if that makes you happy.
Okay.
All right, there's just so many items that it's, it's.
Yeah, it's a lot of stuff. Okay, so with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Still moved. Okay, all right, all right. Thank all the rest of these people because they've been waiting patiently. I could see their faces like, oh my God.
I think we all have.
All right, um, do we want, um, okay, so the next item is a site uh, plan amendment get application for Calco Construction and Development Incorporated for modifications to approve site plan, including parking and drive, stormwater management and associated improvements at four sixty-six Demming Road, three thirty-seven Berlin Turnpike and fifty-one Worthington Ridge in the BT two and PI zones. Now, we don't have to decide this tonight. We have until October eleventh to do that, which is always nice to know. All right, so uh, good evening and welcome, and thank you for your patience. And I'll let you introduce yourself, permission.
Good evening. Evening, everybody. Off of the record, my name is Matthew Bruton. I'm a professional engineer in the state of Connecticut, uh, employed by BL Companies. Uh, address is three fifty-five Research Parkway in Meriden, Connecticut.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you. Uh, so I'm back again. Uh, this wasn't approved that long ago um, with McDonald's in the mixed use building. I'm on the site maybe a few months ago at the most. Um, back now, uh, really for one main driver that has um, changed the site plan, which I want to show you tonight. Added a plans in front of you there, but I can also show you on the screen. Um, so basically we've gone to DOT um, for the encroachment permit approval. And one of the changes that they requested along Demming Road, then our, our driveway into the site, he pushed further back from the traffic signal on the Berlin Turnpike. Approximately the uh, uh, plan that you approve was about two hundred and, it was two hundred and seventy-five feet from the intersection. They wanted it pushed back. We pushed it back an additional one hundred feet. That obviously changed the driveway location and the uh, applicable uh, drive aisles and parking spaces onsite. So we've adjusted the site plan to adjust for that new driveway location. At the same time, we've obviously updated landscaping beds, um, drainage, drainage pipes and things like that to match the new layout. Um, everything still complies with your zoning regulations. Uh, we've already gone back to inland wetlands to seek approval from them and received that um, a few weeks ago. Um, so I'm back now here to kind of walk you through, you know, those changes and see if you have any questions related to that.
Okay.
Um, so if you want to click forward a couple pages on.
Uh, and. Yeah, I also want to make notice that uh, Mr. Hamel is back on board.
Oh, sorry, go back.
Which is one of our commissioners. That's more for housekeeping.
Sure. Yeah, so you can see um, from the plan that's in front of you guys and um, on the screen that the driveway to Demming Road, uh, zoom in, yeah, is pushed further back from the stop bar at Demming. Basically, the DOT's motivation for this request is that at times the queue that backs up at the light along Demming can get long. And they wanted to provide as much possible break in traffic to allow cars to leave our site. Obviously, if there's a queue there, things would back onto our property. As you can tell, we have a lot of drive aisle. We have a lot of space to allow it to happen. But the goal of pushing it further down Demming Road would be to allow space for cars to leave maybe during those peak times.
Can I ask a question? Is that lined up with that light at Home Depot at all?
No, it is, it is not. Uh, the Home Depot entrance is, is further.
Is still further.
Further down Demming, yeah.
Well, that's a shame.
Yeah, yeah. I actually don't think our land even goes back that far to, to, to reach Home Depot, I don't believe.
Yeah.
I don't believe so. I think they both lined up with the gas plaza down.
Yeah.
That would have been, that would have been a good thing.
Yeah.
Because you're still gonna, you're still gonna have your points of contact there.
I think it's actually two properties down that Home Depot is lined up with.
Okay.
So um, the driveway location shifted down to the right. You can see as well, within the Demming Road right of way, we've actually added a right turn lane into the site as well. Help um, allow cars entering the site to kind of get out of the main drive aisle so that people traveling past the site down Demming Road have a clearer shot. Again, that's all within the right of way, but obviously it changed the site plan. So you can see obviously that there's some more green space um, kind of behind the McDonald's. Um, and then the, there's obviously some drive aisles um, uh, coming right off the driveway into Demming. And then um, that's reconfigured around that existing warehouse building. We can reconfigure the parking to match with that new driveway location um, related to Demming. It hasn't changed any of the landscaping or screening or any of those things that I know were a prior concern and, and discussion point with the commission at the last time we were here. Um, did receive some comments from town staff that we replied to at the end of last week. Um, obviously adding a fire hydrant, acknowledging wetlands uh, permits has been approved. No comment from water, um, and then a couple of minor comments from the police chief. Um, so I don't know if there's any other concerns from staff, but um, basically their goal is to receive approval from you guys, like we did from the inland wetlands commission, and then go back to DOT to finalize that approval um, with them for the encroachment permit. Um, the applicant is obviously looking to potentially start construction during this fall season. Um, but obviously this would continue through the winter and into, into twenty twenty.
Yeah, I think one of our commissioners online, Mr. Hamel, has a question. He's been patiently, I think either that or he's waving to us, Mr. Mr. Ham, Scott.
Yeah, I, I just have a question for the fellow commissioners and Maureen and Chair, Madam Chair. Are we referring to this pack, are we referring to this? These plans that we got uh, last night?
The big roll of plans?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I.
So let me, so let me, let me ask a question to Maureen. Um, Maureen, I don't know if I'm out of place saying this to you, but when did, when did these come to your office?
Um, after the last meeting, because we typically, you might recall that we often are trying to get in the habit of sending out plans to you um, at the meeting. I'll hand you plans for the next meeting when we have large scale plans.
All right, so.
And then we did, did we get a revision on this? We got a few sheets from the revised that came in.
It's the same as the.
So.
Came to the house.
These came to my house. So I, I just want to make a comment to all of you. These came to my house last night, yesterday. And I, I don't know about the, the fellow commissioners and I'm sure you all work. And all I'm going to tell you, coming to this commission, handing these plans last night is pretty unfair to all of us. Because you know what? I work all day and I'm sure everyone else does. I haven't even opened them, some plans. And shame on me, I guess, right? But when you get the plans the night before, it's very, very difficult to make any kind of a, a decision.
Yeah.
And that's all I want to state because I'm telling you, this is probably the thickest bunch of plans I've ever seen since I've been on the commission. I've been on for a little bit and I haven't even had time to even review anything. So my question is to the fellow commission, Maureen, everyone, how do you make any decisions when you can't even have time to look at this stuff?
So can I partially address that?
Yeah, uh, yeah, Maureen's going to address it.
You can address it.
Oh, this, this is a um, a modification to a previously approved plan. And BL Companies did provide us with very detailed plans and plan sheets, um, and a lot of sheets. Um, this is an item that does not have to be decided tonight. But um, given staff time for reviews as well and the comments that came in from the other departments, um, we felt it was important to distribute and have the applicant explain what the changes are um, for the commissions, the commission members. And then it is up to the commission members to decide whether you have enough information and their presentation is or is not um, complete enough as you go through, as they go through the plans in their presentation or a decision, or you have the time allotted to make a decision, which on this I think is a must decide not in, until um, at least two more meetings. So much like the, the um, application that Mr. Whitney presented over the course of three meetings, because you had conversation, because it's fair for the applicant to also get commission. Um, feedback and you have the opportunity to present the application so that you can actually look at the plans with the eyes of what the changes are and what's happening. Because that's hard to see between the plans that you would have approved e, months ago, um, the beginning of the year, last year. Um, and what is changing in this plan set?
Well, Maureen, you know what? I, I, I wholeheartedly understand where you're coming from with this and I respect that. But what, I just think it's very unfair to, I, I know we're going to hear him and we're going to listen to what he has to say. But I'm telling you, going forward, I just think it's very unfair for him, like I, I feel bad for him. We have this thing to review. I haven't, I haven't reviewed it and asked the commission, how many of these commissioners have reviewed this? I mean, I'm just saying, Maureen, going forward, you know what? I have a real hard time with this.
We'll do our best.
Because it, it just something that needs to be addressed. And I, and like, again, like you said, we have a couple more shots at this, a couple more weeks or whatever. But going forward, I, I would fully respect the fact that we get these a little earlier, so it's not, you know, so it's more fair to him when he comes to us. Because I'm sure not, this commission hasn't reviewed these.
Yeah.
That's, I, I will also comment, and this isn't to, you know, and it's actually another conversation that I intended to have later in the meeting. But it was called to our attention that many other commissions, especially with at, plans and applications online, aren't doing, delivering packets anymore. So I, you know, have always been under the um, you know, you've got plan sets. These are things you want to roll them out. You want to look at them. It makes sense to distribute them. But when they do come in, they are immediately posted onto that link and in our application folder.
And I'll just point off of the record, I.
They're available online and on, you know.
Yeah.
With it is, as soon as staff can get them online.
You know, when I get these plans, I, I don't really have um, a whole lot of context until I hear from staff and hear from the applicant. So for me getting it the night before, it wouldn't matter if I got it two weeks before because I'm not going, I could review it, but I really need that first crack with staff and with the applicant and the, my fellow commissioners to truly absorb it. And then we have a couple more meetings anyway. So frankly, keep doing what you're doing as far as I'm concerned.
Well, we'd like to get them to you at, like a week in advance. That is our target.
The other issue, so many changes that happens, but if, if you can, Maureen, but to be honest with you, so many changes happen. We're always going to get stuff dumped on us and I, I'm not prejudiced at all by this.
No.
All right, well, we all, I think this is probably is pulling away from the business at hand right now, which is trying to help this young man over here explain to us what's going on to the, on with the plan. Although all the points, all the points are really something that we need to think and discuss, but that'll be later on after we do our business here, okay? So, all right, thank you, Mr. Hamel, and thank you um, all here. Okay, let's go back.
Uh, yeah, I mean, that's really the kind of high level overview. I just reminder from a timing standpoint, we got staff comments on the twenty-first, turned them back around. You guys have been a couple of days. So we try to do the same thing, go as fast as possible to get you guys and staff plans back in your hands as fast as we possibly can. So you guys have as much time to review, because obviously, you know, everything's timing with everybody. So, but I'm happy to answer any questions that.
All right, my, my burning question is this. So your being here tonight is all about the need to move the driveway down.
Yeah, so.
Demming Road.
Say, we got the approval from you guys and normal processes, we submit to the town and the DOT at the same time. DOT will never approve anything until they know we have a local approval in hand. They don't want to waste their time, but we try to do those things concurrently as a, as a savings for the uh, applicant to, to move fast. When we got their first two rounds of comments, we came to the conclusion that this needed to be pushed back. Normally, if I was nudging a driveway just a little bit, it wouldn't have as much of an effect on the actual site plan as this has. But given that this moved a hundred feet, it rippled, it had a ripple effect back into the site that was significant enough that when we came and sat with town staff, town engineers said, yes, this needs to be a site plan modification application, not only on the wetland side, but also on the planning and zoning side. So normally it's a, it's a smooth process, inland wetlands, planning and zoning encroachment permit. This change was significant enough that I've had to kind of come back around.
Yeah, okay, commissioners, go ahead.
You, can I ask you to go a little more detail into explaining your drainage changes?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Because that is really um, the one of the big things that, that caused you to come back here.
Yeah, 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 absolutely. So.
Well, it was layout change.
In addition to the, they're, they're interconnected. Um, so basically the layout change, so obviously our catch basins and piping and things as well had to be adjusted with the new landscaped islands and the new impervious areas that we're dealing with. So um, along with the DOT comments, the uh, the set that was approved by this commission a few months ago was also sent out to contractors for pricing to get the ball rolling towards construction. At that point, there was some discussion about how we can value engineer this with the new layout to be more um, financially feasible. So there were some changes related to the layout that still provides the peak flow mitigation, the water quality improvements that don't exist on the site today. Um, so uh, a lot of those features are still here. They've just been moved around. But one change that'll be visibly apparent uh, when you drive by the site post-construction is um, we added an above-ground detention basin towards the rear of the parcel um, adjacent to the wetlands. That wasn't previously there. Before, there was a lot of subsurface underground detention systems. We still have aspects of that, but there is an above-ground system now that wasn't previously in, uh, included. Um, that obviously um, changed the limit of disturbance for the project. And that's why we had to go back to wetlands as well. They did sign off on that. So um, it's kind of intertwined with the layout changes that I described that were really driven by the DOT comments.
So that's still under review for wetlands?
No, wetlands is approved. They, they approved a few weeks ago.
And if I may.
Yeah.
At the town engineer, and I believe you have, who's had decent comments. Um, might not have ended up putting them in writing, because that was a very, a conversation I had with him today was that he, um, as you may recall, he very much scrutinized and asked for modifications to the details of their original plan for drainage. And um, when he went back and looked at this modified plan, um, he is more than satisfied that the, that this plan is a, is um, a, a good plan or, or it meets his, you know, uh, his scrutiny of the, of the plan.
I do actually, um, I do like seeing this adjustment. I do remember we were looking at the original plans. This was actually one of the things we threw out there as a change you can make. Um, and your traffic study guy um, had other thoughts. He thought it was fine where it was. But personally, this is one thing that I wanted to see from the get-go and um, happy to see it being addressed now.
Can you, I don't know if you have a plan there, but you said it's an above-ground detention center?
Yeah, so if um, if staff wants to click forward a couple more plans here, it's not, it won't be depicted on the site plan, but um, it'd be a grading and drainage plan, which would be a couple more pages. Keep going.
So is it a detention pond?
Yes. Uh, keep going. Sorry. Around you guys have paperwork. Oh, it's up right there. So you can see on the lower right-hand corner, you can see there's a, yeah, exactly where the mouse is floating over now.
I have.
And a new addition to a detention basin in that location. Prior to that, we had some subsurface detention systems underneath the parking lot between the McDonald's and the existing building. Um, that was priced out and, and, and feasible based on the other improvements that needed to be made. So we made the switch um, to the above-ground basin. Still provides all the, the peak flow mitigation, water quality improvements uh, as the original system did. And as Maureen said, the engineer's happy with that, but that is a, just a physical change in the landscaped area adjacent to the wetlands in the rear there.
All right, thank you. Mission questions? I don't, I don't know. I, I'm, I'm also a little bit thunderstruck only because the plans did arrive at my house yesterday too. And I haven't had a chance in all fairness to look at it.
I, I understand.
We are.
So I don't, I don't know. Any other questions at this point?
Yeah, I got one, one question. He, he, he mentioned DOT and uh, I just, with the previous application. Uh, DOT said all right to this uh, deceleration lane coming in?
Yep, yep. Most of their comments have been focused on the um, the Demming. Yep, yep. Most of their comments have been focused on the um the Deming Road entrance.
Okay, because because that was discussion on the previous application. Yeah, so.
Well, I'm getting the the feeling that this commission would like to um continue this so that we could review the plans in a little bit more detail. Yeah, so I am going to make the motion to continue to our next meeting.
Continue on second.
Uh, second by Mr. Joyce, motion will sleep by Mr. Rogan. Further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I gotta I gotta make one compliment compliment to the uh applicant. I've never seen such detailed plans in my life.
This chairman wins the next meeting just wait.
Oh, eighteenth. Eighteenth.
Thursday of the month.
Thursday, yeah, just two weeks, two weeks, yeah. Okay, all right, moving on, and and thank you for your patience in that. Okay, request for the modification of Decormier Woods subdivision site plan to eliminate the island at the entrance of Brittany's Path at Ice Pond Road. Who do we have? Oh. Oh, you're speaking for the applicant?
Well.
Okay, no. Well. Okay.
On behalf of the neighbor, on the on behalf of the neighbors.
Okay, hold on, hold on.
I see that Scott has his hand raised, so I don't know if he wanted to make that comment.
Scott, uh, do you have your hand raised? Did you?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Take the hand.
Okay, so.
Never seen.
So you're representing the neighborhood. So are you the one who is requesting the modify? Is the neighborhood requesting the modification?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, okay.
I'm speaking on behalf of the neighbors.
Okay. All right, I'll let you do your paperwork.
Go 10 Hawk standing.
All right. Thank you. I miss spinning at 5:00 AM.
Yeah, me too.
But anyway.
We um the the neighborhood is 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 pretty much in completion, at least for the time being, where there's several house several lots that aren't completed yet. However, um, Mrs. Decormier is planning on putting the the top cap, the final cap on the road. And the sidewalks in and getting the road, getting the subdivision ready to hand over to the town.
Mm-hmm.
Um, in the existing plans for the road, and I don't know if you folks are familiar with where we're we're located, but we we're off of Ice Pond, which is off Main Street. Uh, it's it's on a hill that Ray Decormier hobbled together years and years ago. And I helped him plan the development and to where the point now we're getting ready to finish it. Uh, the the roadway up from uh as it as it comes off of Ice Pond right now has a um island in the middle of the road.
Okay.
Uh, it's it's a bit off-center, uh, and it's been a uh it's been a obstacle for haul trucks. Not that the town has done it because the town does do the property yet. And um it it's it's a somewhat of a maintenance issue. The homeowners got together and uh speaking on their behalf, uh, we are asking the for a it it exception to the present plan. To and we would like to eliminate the island when the road finally gets paved.
Okay.
Should be very shortly.
Okay, Alexa, is there either or Maureen, can we see what it looks like? There's no street view because it's too you you can't.
Oh, that's a great idea.
This boulevard that you're referring to, is it the beginning of the?
The very beginning.
It's a
It's it's
Is it on Main Street or is it on?
Off of Ice Pond.
Of Ice.
Excuse me?
Is it land?
Just just grass. We're waiting. We've been we've been waiting to set everything and in landscape the entrance. Uh, once we get the road paved, now we're at that point. So no, it's not landscape at this point.
Okay.
So.
What, Tim?
If I remember this project, the the Center Island uh was supposed to have a stone uh sign on it, you know, it's a sign saying what the development name is.
I, oh.
Plan right now for that uh is to move that to one side or the other, one either the left or the right side of the of the of the boulevard, if you will.
But I'm I'm just saying that that's what the i- purpose of the island was to put that sign there.
Exactly.
Uh.
I I think the I think the issue
Entrance sign.
That um so much time has gone by, Ray has passed away. Rand doesn't really have an interest in maintaining the property or or and she hasn't uh as 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 the pro- as the development owner right now. And or do the owners really want to have something else to have to worry about and maintain? We'd have to spend exorbitant amount of money to the to make the island presentable. And right now, the plan is is just at the entrance. We're going to put a uh uh, we are planning on putting a light post and the monument, so to speak, that referring to, we're going to put that on that side. I we this is Decormier is not planning to pay for any improvements anymore and once she has the land developed, so this is up to the owner uh property.
Yeah. Okay, so now so now we can see what's going on here.
No, i- yes and no. It's 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 we are planning on disbanding any possibility of an HOA. The neighbor the neighbors are.
Well, we'll take over the open space.
With the open space, we we are the open space will we are looking at having the lands the land trust take that over.
Okay, because it's on the plans, it's to be held by the HOA.
Correct.
So that all.
I don't have a plan. Do you have?
It would come through your office as well. I won't be back for this one. For that one. Just this one.
All right. Yeah, because we're dependent on the pictures here because we didn't have a plan included, right?
Well, and that's the island. It's it's a great it's a great depiction of exactly what it is. The trouble is is that island is every time a truck has come up the hill to um deliver uh construction materials, it's run over the island. Uh, some of the paving is some of the curbing is missing from it.
All right, so if you eliminate that, what is your what's your?
We're this will all just it'll all be roadway.
It'll be roadway. And then where's that uh sign or whatever?
You where you see the street sign now.
Yes.
That's where that's where the uh the the monument, so to speak, will be.
Must it be like a little curved wall or something?
Oh, I don't think it's going to be that elaborate.
No?
No.
There'll be signs says this way? This way in, this way out?
We could do that.
No, 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 I'm just seeing if you're paying attention.
I am paying. Oh, come on.
I know, I know. But anyway, um, yeah, so but do you so tell me about a little bit of that signage thing that you're going to have over there, only because I'm dependent on my imagination and stuff.
We are we are going to put along with a uh Ray Decormier left with me, he left two uh large uh light fixtures, the post.
Okay.
We're going to mount those. The post is going to be a post could be a substantial post. And on both sides will have those lights.
Okay.
And um the the sign will very simply say Decormier Woods. If if in fact it does say that.
Okay.
Um, we we're not that's to be determined and it'll be quite frankly, wh- whatever what at the discretion of the commission, whatever you feel you'd like us to have there, we would. I've seen other subdivisions that have the signs. Um, some of them are very nice.
Yeah.
Whether or not, and usually when you see a uh a stone edifice of some kind.
Yeah.
It tends to look good for a little while. And then it doesn't. So we we just we're going to mulch and shrub area. There's 400 feet before the first house on that on that side of the road. Uh, I'm looking at that picture. It would be from here, it would be on the on the right side.
Yeah.
So.
That will that sidewalks go up there all the way up uh on Brittany's Path until you get to Hawks Landing, which is uh on the right-hand side is a sub it's a cul-de-sac off the right-hand side. And um so it we're going to we're going to have some simple as maintenance-free landscaping as we can, but but very taste as tasteful as possible as well. And with with cost the cost in mind, obviously.
So when I look at that, um, there's really not that much space in that island to really do anything nice landscaping anyways. Let alone keep it alive without a little uh pervious space there is for water. Um, so I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the modification to uh the site plan to eliminate the island at the entrance of Brittany's Path at Ice Pond Road.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second for discussion.
Second for discussion. Let's join.
The um I I don't think all the points have been uh discussed that would need to be resolved because if the HOA, if the intent is for the HOA to go away, whose responsibility is it going to be to maintain the sign? Or one or other aspects of the subdivision that um the HOA would have responsibilities for?
It's a very good question, and the responsibility will most likely lie on me. Um, the the neighborhood likes the neighborhood is a typical neighborhood. You know, it's it's a hi, how you doing? You know, when you get your newspaper, you take out your trash. Um, but we've met a couple of times and the big debate has been about this HOA. Do we need it? Are we going to disband it? Uh, what what responsibility do we have? You know, the original covenants, uh restrictive covenants that Ray and I developed have been adhered to. Uh, the houses are the right size, the three-car garages, and quite frankly, virtually everybody takes wonderful care of their property. Sidewalks are in for every every part of that subdivision where they're supposed to be except for the stuff. So what you would have for maintenance, man, would be um you would have some grass cutting going up approximately 400 feet. Nero, who is no longer who who sold his business, but has has is has property at the end of the subdivision. Uh, and then one of his associates has another property across from across from where we live. Uh, so there's been discussion about what it would cost, and everybody has agreed that if we have as far as maintenance goes, we would all take care of it. Deferring to the gentleman over there who mentioned the 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 island and the difficulty maintaining it. There's no irrigation there right now, and it would be difficult to put irrigation into the island. We could irrigate down to the down to the corner, but as far as maintenance goes, as far as grass cutting, uh, that will be that will be taken care by the neighbors without association. Or if we decide to have one, it's it's still premature.
You're not putting sidewalks on this this stretch here that's on the screen, are you?
But on the uh on the screen, it would be.
There's no sidewalks there now.
Back, right? Go back down to the bottom of the street.
Because are
The sidewalks are
Is this all above?
To be installed on the west side of the
Correct.
That side of your screen.
All right, so all that nice little wooded area that we're looking at, are those are those future homes?
That remains. The the area on the looking at that picture on the right side.
Yep.
The wooded area remains.
All right, but you're not going to put sidewalks there, are you?
On the right side, those I'm not putting the sidewalks there.
No, I mean.
You made us.
Yeah, yes.
But are there home?
Division four is sidewalks on one side of the street. And they will be on the west side, which is the side over here.
Okay. But my question is, are there are those future home sites right there?
Okay, let me clarify. 400 feet from the bottom of the road
Yep.
is 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 open. There will be no homes. There is a lot directly after that. That hasn't that hasn't been started yet. And then after that is lot, uh, that would be lot one, and then lot two uh is is undeveloped at this point as well.
Yeah, it was caught in the existing sidewalk that you see there was being connected up the street.
Correct. It it would it would stop at the end of where Hawks Landing on the right side of the road all the way to the end.
Now, I got one question. You take the island out. Okay, the road is so much a little bit wider because of the island in the center. So if you take the island out, one of those curbs will have to move in to make the road the same width all the way down.
Or is that that island is is put in a position where it's not equidistant to either side of the road right now? It's off-center.
Well, I see that, but 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 uh the walk, the road up further, 100 feet up, whatever, is narrower than at the end of section. Okay, so it's it's that way because you got an island in the center. Okay, uh the road should basically be the same width all the way up through.
That's certainly something that can be addressed.
You know.
Party is is going to be doing the
Yeah, I mean, if they're doing a sidewalk there, they probably could just eliminate some of the the width of the road. That's what I'm saying. That's all because uh make it conformer.
Andrew.
This is going to be a town road once you take this. Okay, then they're going to pave it and then they're going to stripe it or do whatever they have to do. So they'll go in and they'll do whatever they have to do with the curbing on their own anyway. They're going to make it. Who does that?
Developer does.
Get the developer.
Developer, but the developer doesn't want to do it.
The developer puts the last coating on the road and stripes it. Then it's turned over to the town.
But I thought he said she doesn't want to put any more money into this now.
There's $525,000 in surety bond.
Okay.
In in
Okay.
Against this road and the sidewalk and the remainder of area that needs to be finished.
And and the two lights that you're going to put in, I'm assuming they're not the regular street lights that are already installed there.
They're decorative.
No, I feel. Decorative. And they're going to be connected with CLMP, I'm sure, underground, correct? Okay, all right, thank you.
Just for clarification, the subdivision, there is a subdivision bond in place. And what they are beginning to look forward to is completing all the rest of the improvements that weren't weren't completed, which includes the sidewalk going down, and you can see the subdivision there. She lit up the that parcel for a minute, but the the identifier, oh, it doesn't click cover it this time. She clicked at a different place. So you can see that that yellow area up at the corner of Ice Pond and um Brittany's Path where it meets Ice Pond is that the the whole thing that's lit up is what is supposed to be the open space land of the subdivision. Um, I had not um I have not scrutinized the developer's desire to um disband the homeowners' association. Um, and I'll have to look into that because that certainly was part of your approval that there was an association and and what all and what they are responsible for and not expecting that to come up today. So that has not been scrutinized as a possibility. Um, they were the ones who um did you may recall that Mr. Nero um went through the conservation area and cleared, and he brought back a restoration plan, and it was the homeowners or the owner of the property because there's not a homeowners' association yet that still misses Decormier at all, you know, that what that association was um that owned it, that got the notice as well as we knew Mr. Nero did it, so we so he got the notice and that's why he came up with the restoration plan. Um, but it's things like that that we want to make sure are maintained, and so we will have to look at the paperwork and legalities of of that. Um, as far as them trying to um finish up the site improvements, that's where the sidewalk along that area comes in. And without a homeowners' association, we do have the maintenance of the sidewalk is gonna be a question because you may recall the land trust has frequently asked that the property they get out to the road become an easement instead of have sidewalks because they don't want to be responsible for sidewalks because they don't have the capability to go out all over town to shovel those. So that's another discussion that we'll have staff-wise with the applicants before they come in for a change such as that to the rest of their plan. Um, this conversation was added to the agenda, as I mentioned last month. As the the um island itself and um thought it belonged on the agenda as opposed to something staff would do. But our um public works department does not have an objection to the island being removed and does concur that it does make life easier for their plows once the road is accepted.
Excuse me, we have a motion on the floor. We have a second, and what we're motioning is to eliminate the island. But if we vote on that motion, we're still there's still the question mark about the HOA and the sidewalks. And the specifics of yeah. So we can't do that all clumped together. So can we still move on this motion? Or do
It's all we posted it for was just to eliminate the island at the entrance of Brittany's Path because that's
The other issues would have to be addressed separately.
If I may, and you know, I'm not, I certainly don't, I certainly don't have the expertise that you folks do, and I'm not one of these these attorneys or
Yeah.
do this stuff, but there are there are uh 12 houses out of 18 built there. And I think there are six children in the neighborhood. The the whole idea of sidewalks coming up this road. Certainly, if if sidewalks are what you need, it's 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 what you what we're going to do. But to put these sidewalks in, especially But to put these sidewalks in, especially when you have four hundred feet of, 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 of space, that's not going to be, that nobody owns, and the association is supposed to take care of.
We, we understand that, and but, but that's our, my question is, our motion is only pertaining to the island, but that leaves these other issues that are, they have to be sorted out. You know, because if the land trust, if you, if you do dedicate that land to the land trust, yes, I mean, you really have to sort of step back and say, are we, are we going to drive the sidewalk through? And if we do, who's going to go out there and shovel it? Because the land trust is not going to do it, and then who does it become the responsibility for? So it's all sort of snowballing, you know, but the motion is the motion, and my, my question to staff was, can we still just vote on that motion while we have all these other things?
I believe it's the only motion you should be voting on.
Well, yeah, exactly. So with that, I'm going to move the motion, which is to eliminate the island. Okay, we have a second, we had a discussion, so all those in favor, aye. Those opposed, so moved.
Thank you for your time.
No problem. Okay, good night. All right. Okay, so then.
Putting them in, as the homes have been built, they've been put in, and, but they wouldn't get their bond back until they were put in with.
All right, so next item up is the bond release reductions for the request for Jeffrey Muschot for the release of the erosion control bond being held at Force Ninety-Six Four-Rod Road. And what do you have on that?
An email from Jim Horrible this afternoon that says the engineering department has no objection to releasing the soil erosion control bond in the amount of forty-nine fifty.
Make a motion to approve release.
All right, motion by Ms. Josie, second. Second by Ms. Daly. Further discussion, all those in favor, aye. Those opposed, so moved. Okay, thank you, Mr. Hamel. Next up is to discuss the status of the pending litigation of David Luski and Donna Lus- and I don't know if I'm saying that right, Luke Check, excuse me, versus the Planning and Zoning Commission for the Town of Berlin and One Seventy-Five West Main Street LLC. We have docket numbers and the August twenty-eighth, twenty-five request of the Superior Court for clarification on the commission's decision on the subdivision application of M. Confero-
Conferowitz.
Conferowitz, thank you, on behalf of One Seventy-Five West Main Street LLC for three residential lots at Two Thirty-Five Weathersfield Road, Berlin. Okay.
Good evening, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not there with you, unfortunately, I have COVID yet again.
Oh, my God.
That you could hear me okay.
Is this like your fifth or sixth time this year?
Seventh, yeah, it's my seventh time, and I'm really not feeling well, but.
Oh, I am sorry.
I hope all of you remain healthy. So last Thursday, we had the hearing on the merits, so this is an administrative appeal. The records get filed, the parties brief the matter, and we appear before Judge of the Superior Court to argue at a hearing on the merits, that's what the trial is called. And there is an issue in the case with regard to the conditions of approval, the modifications to the subdivision plan that the commission noted, noted in its decision, so I would like to distribute to you, I'm going to distribute some correspondence to you regarding the matter, and also the entire filed record. It, it is large, so I will share that via via our firm's share file account. But, and then we could have more particular discussion at your next meeting on the eighteenth with regard to the matter. The court is simply asking for clarification on the conditions of approval or the modifications in it, and I think when, you know, you, you review the actual transcript from the deliberation, that will be helpful to you, so I, again, I'll get correspondence out to you. I just had asked that this be put on. I was, you know, hoping to be there tonight. I'm very sorry that I'm not. But I just want to remind too, in terms of the folks that will participate in that discussion for clarification, it will be Ms. Daly, Mr. Hamel, Ms. Josie, Ms. Millard, Ms. Veely, and Mr. Zig, and Mr. Rogan. I believe Mr. Rogan was the seventh, I just want to, I did check that, yeah. So, so it will be the seven of you that will participate in, in the discussion on the eighteenth. So at this point, is anybody aware that they cannot attend that meeting? I'm, I'm sorry, Brian, I didn't hear you.
Yeah, I will not be able to make that meeting.
Okay. I think it, it, it may be beneficial then if if we can schedule another time, because I did want to do it this month, just to be able to get back to the court. Perhaps Maureen, we can do a fully remote. Meeting, or, I'm sorry, the night before, is that what you?
Yeah, any, any night on the week, see if everyone can make it.
Thoughts on that?
No, I'm, I'm away for the seventeenth to the twenty-second.
When are you available, man?
That's the only, the seventeenth to the twenty-second is the only time I'm not available, so any other day in the month, I'm good.
Seventeenth to the twenty-second?
Yeah, so I can't do Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday, but I can do any other day.
Monday, Tuesday, then?
Monday, Tuesday, fine.
Monday, Tuesday?
There's the Berlin Fair coming up. I don't know if people have obligations.
Fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, or something like that, yeah.
The Berlin Fair is over on the fourteenth, so we could do the pink for sixteen?
Yeah, that's fine.
Jennifer, can you just give me a location on Weathersfield Road on this three-lot subdivision? I got to get it in my head.
The one? You know this one. It's across from the Bundy property.
Oh, okay, no, no.
All right, you remember the one, remember the one we had the history on? Yeah, okay, so can we do the Monday or Tuesday before? And because it'll be a special hearing, we can really call it at any time. What, Tuesday's better? Monday, Tuesday?
I'm, I'm fine with either date, it's up to the seven of you.
All right, so, so it would be Tuesday, and Tuesday would be, what, the sixteenth?
That is the sixteenth, yes.
All right, so Tuesday, sixteenth, what time?
Just want to know, I think, I'm looking it up, but I think that's a council meeting night, as long as it's not a conflict with anyone else.
Well, we, we can be in Doc Mac.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure we can find a meeting room, I just want to let.
Yeah.
Mission know in case.
And we could also do something at like six o'clock maybe, or five-thirty? I mean, I don't want to cut into every.
Is that a problem for anybody? Ms., Mr. Hamel, is that a problem for you?
What time? You said six thir-, six o'clock? Five-thirty is, five-thirty be pushing, six o'clock is fine.
All right.
I can make six happen.
On the sixteenth?
Six, on the sixteenth.
At six o'clock.
That's fine.
All right, everyone good with that?
Yep.
All right, yep, 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 okay.
That, that's, I, I, I thank you for, for accommodating.
No problem, that'll be the only item on the little agenda.
Yes.
Okay, yeah. Okay, I hope you feel better, Jennifer.
Thank, thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you, all right. Now, onto the public hearings. Do you have a reading for the call for the public hearings? We're getting there, we promised, we're getting there. All right.
Town of Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission Notice of Public Hearings. The Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission will hold public hearings at a regular meeting on Thursday, August twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five at seven PM in the Town Council Chambers, Berlin Town Hall, Two Forty, Kensington Road, Berlin, Connecticut. Interested parties may join the meeting and participate in public hearings in person or remotely as provided below. One, text amendment application of Robert and Sharon Fontanella to add new subsection to Special Regulations Agriculture eleven dot C dot nine to expand the definition of agriculture to allow single-family dwelling. Applications and related meeting materials are available at the Planning and Zoning Department, Berlin Town Hall, Two Forty, Kensington Road, Berlin, Connecticut. Dated this eighth day of August, twenty-twenty-five at Berlin, Connecticut, Brian Rubin Secretary, Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission. New Britain Herald Legal Notices slash Classified Advertising Dates of Publication, Monday, August eleventh, twenty-twenty-five, and Friday, August fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five, posted with the Berlin Town Clerk, Friday, August eighth, twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, is there anyone, are you representing the text amendment, Maureen, or?
There's a second one, too.
Should be here, Mr., I think attorney.
Oh, wait, there's a second one? The call for the, the second call, sorry.
All right, yep. So, Berlin, should I read the whole thing? Just the part, the whole thing. Town of Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission Notice of Public Hearings. The Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission will hold public hearings at regular meeting, Thursday, September fourth, twenty-twenty-five, at seven PM in the Town Council Chambers, Berlin Town Hall, Two Forty, Kensington Road, Berlin, Connecticut. Interested parties may join the meeting and participate in the public hearings in person or remotely as provided below. One, text amendment, application of DEB Realty to add new subsection to Planned Shopping A Permitted Site Uses six dot A dot two to include the addition of event use as a new use. Applications and related meeting materials are available at the Planning and Zoning Department, Berlin Town Hall, Two Forty, Kensington Road, Berlin, Connecticut. Dated this nineteenth day of August, twenty-twenty-five at Berlin, Connecticut, Brian Rubin Secretary, Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission. New Britain Herald Legal Notices slash Classified Advertising Dates of Publication, Friday, August twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five, Friday, August twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-five. Posted with Berlin Town Clerk, Thursday, August nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five.
Well, okay. Yeah. No, 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 go ahead. Oh, the.
Want to make sure this is distributed in your last package, make sure that it, that you brought it, or I will run off a few extra for you. One of us will run and get.
I got it.
That's part of it, but it was, it was, it was distributed in last month's package. So it was the staff report. I went with it, and I think Ashley reminded you, but I was afraid that it might happen this time.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just whether you brought last month's package. You bring your information from last month's package.
I did.
I know.
I did.
I can share if you want.
I mean, if anyone, if you want to share with anyone, I mean.
We can share on the, the text on the screen as well, but.
I can let you.
Made some comments, it's, it's, that may be considered a change, so I just want to make sure that.
Did you want to see them in the last meeting?
We were expecting to hear it at the last meeting, and the applicant asked it the last minute. The last minute.
Yeah.
I'll go make some.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the only.
It doesn't look like she gave it a whole. Again, she gave you part of it, again.
The hell was this?
But after a while she does that.
Yeah, go ahead and do that. No, she just went to the ladies' room, I think. All right, I can get rid of karate here, right? I'm going to get rid of a lot of this stuff. Okay.
It's good to have extra staff on.
Yeah, really good to have extra staff. All right.
I mean, six girls here.
Yep, okay.
I'm sorry, you were on your way before, we should have let you keep coming. I didn't realize you stopped coming.
Well, the reason Sharon requested a postponement of the public hearing last time was because I had an accident. I was in the hospital unexpectedly, long time. So I can't bear any weight, my left foot yet.
Okay.
So I can stay in here for a little while, but I might have to take a break.
Well, if you want to take a chair.
Could be helpful.
Yeah, take, take a chair and use a microphone.
The mobile one.
All right. I think, yeah, we'll probably hear you better.
All right. So.
Well, I'm glad you're with us today.
I'm getting a little stronger every day.
Yep.
So in the application, we explained to encourage farm preservation, we're looking to add a new section to expand the definition of agriculture, so it will include a single-family dwelling, subject to certain requirements. And this was inspired by the discussion in your P O C D, specifically page one oh six, which discussed some strategies that try to preserve farms, especially on Chamberlain Road, which is in the P O D zone, and which doesn't automatically allow a single-family dwelling. And that's quite an impediment when you're trying to encourage somebody to continue farming if they can also live there. And there's a couple lots where this would, this amendment, if approved, would solve that problem and really make it marketable. I did notice I have a typo there when I set forth the actual text of the proposed tech, the proposed amendment, and in subsection I, it says the parcel use of the parcel, that should read the primary use of the parcel. And Maureen did have some comments, which I could respond to. So, you know, comment number one, I think, is, do you think this is a good idea? And we believe it is, based on the discussion of E O C D. And it's hard for us to imagine what, you know, harm this might cause, if anything, it's going to help that goal of preserving farms. Comment two, of course, you know, the, the language could be, could be revised. One idea is to allow a single-family home regardless of meeting the bulk requirements. And I, we're certainly not opposed to that revision. If the commission likes it, it's, you know, would be a little more lenient than having to satisfy the bulk requirements. But if, if bulk requirements are important, then we propose some ones that are pretty comparable to the residential ones. Comment B, again, you could expand this idea and say it could apply to any applicable zone or limit it to the P O D and the OT zones. So we're certainly not opposed to that, if the commission likes a more liberal approach. Comment C, language might be considered that addresses the consequence to the accessory residential use. If, if the farm use is discontinued, I think you always run into that potential problem. You have a residential use and it migrates to a commercial use, you have to use your enforcement powers. There's a great incentive to continue the farm use for tax purposes, if, if nothing else, so. we don't think that should be a, a big obstacle. And then again, evaluate the bulk standard for the accessory residential structure as proposed. Determine if language should clarify the residential unit would be allowed in a farm building or must be a freestanding residential structure. I didn't think of that issue, but strikes me as, you know, either one is, is consistent with your goal. So whether it's adding a residential unit to a farm building or having a freestanding residential structure, I would think both might be a good thing.
Maureen, can I ask a question? All right, so when we're talking about this adding, I just want to know what zones we're talking about, what's going to be impacted?
So the way the language was, so let me start with, in the plan of conservation and development, one of the stra, goals and strategies included adding a provision so that agricultural uses in the P O D zone would have a dwelling in order to encourage them to be maintained as farms. Because it's identified as an issue that some of those parcels were having trouble having someone who wanted to do micro farming or, you know, certain more small scale farming on the size parcels they have. If they couldn't live there, they've walked away from those parcels. So, so maintaining them was, has been a problem. So those are, that was where we started with the conversation when the Fontenellas came in and said they wanted to make this proposal was that it is something that identified in the P O C D. That is specific to the P O D zone. When we did the analysis of the zones that allow agriculture but don't allow residential, I found this zone, and I'm sorry, I wrote this a month ago. The another zone that does not allow it, the OT and the OT two zones that I believe allow for agriculture but would not allow for single family dwellings. So when they proposed the text amendment, rather than have them put it in the P O D regulations, we thought it was appropriate to suggest it go into the agriculture regulations because it's an accessory use to agriculture as opposed to allowing outright allowing housing in the other industrial zones in any of those industrial zones that were listed as allowing agriculture.
So right now, I mean, just because we're discussing this, the only parcels that would be affected would be the ones along the Chamberlain Highway in South Kensington.
And there's also, I believe, a couple of parcels in the northwest corner of town, northeast corner up near.
Demming Road?
Demming Road, up near Eversource.
Yeah.
That are OT zoned. That could potentially be farm sized, you know, farm parcels and may or may not apply. But that's where we have other OT.
Well, there's a house there.
That's restricted. I believe that has some restrictions on that parcel.
Yeah, well, they're building, right?
That's all right. Now, I, I mean, I'm wasn't party to it.
I guess I'm old school. I came from the town where people had a house with a lot of property and decided to put a farm on the property after the house was built. So I mean, the, the idea of having land restricted with not having the ability to put a house on a farm.
Seems odd.
It, it seems like we're, it's, yeah, I'm trying to get my head wrapped around it. But I also want to be cautious because we have to look at this as how would it affect, it could impact other parcels within town. So we have to weigh that as well. Okay. Diane.
I think what I struggle with, with this is the distinction between the primary and accessory use because if agriculture is supposed to be the primary use and for some reason fails, what becomes of a house that's there? That's, and as I'm thinking about it, you know, does the house have to be occupied by the person that's farming? Does the person that's farming have to necessarily be the owner of the property?
I did not read.
That's part of your regulations now, it doesn't, it doesn't say farming has to be by the owner.
But it's, this is a, a special circumstance where the house is an accessory use.
Because the primary use would be.
Primary is the farm.
Hmm.
So the other thing, if you could clarify for me, I, I have read it so many times and I just don't understand. Item three, the lot size is no less than 10 acres or no less than five acres if the lot is part of the farming subdivision master plan for a parcel greater than 10 acres. It seems like circle talk to me, I don't understand what the heck you're saying.
That is straight from our regulations in the farming.
Need a decoder ring.
Yes, correct.
It's a straight quote out of the existing farming regulations that offer farms.
So we don't know what.
More or three acres or more if part of a.
Non-consecutive parcels, something like that?
Believe, I believe that's where it came, came from again.
That's right, that's where I saw it and I thought since you added in there, you probably wanted to keep it.
I was like, is this, and then I went back and saw that it was in the farming regulations that were adopted in 2016.
We need to look at that because as I read that, it's like subdivision master plan, okay, well, what's supposed to be in a subdivision master plan? The farming subdivision master plan, what's that?
So I, I believe you're allowed to divide farm parcels into smaller lots without subdivision approval of the Planning and Zoning Commission if they're all remain for farming. Like they're like, you can divide up a farm lot into farm section. I'd have to look at the statute again.
I know we did something back over, we, back in the day where we allow like a family, separate farm, this person three acres, this person three acres. Joining three acres meets the 10 acres that they can all partake in the farming activities of if they had time. A lot of farm families got.
Well, that's not how I interpreted that, but if you were on the commission then, I was not the, the staff to the commission when that was analyzed, so I defer to the commission members that were for the intent.
What year was that?
16.
I'm very, I'm very confused here because that's farmland, okay, and I don't have any problem with that. And my problem was when P O D came in, how you gonna put a plan office development out in South Kensington with no waters, sewers or anything else? It was, but by design, yes, it wa, it was adopted by design that the property wouldn't be used, bottom line, except for farming. Okay. So our we should both the P O D and OT and OT two redo those regulations because P O D is ridiculous, ridiculous having out of, on Chamberlain Highway. Who's going to put a plan office development out there anyway? It should be defined as residential property, agriculture, and, and it has to stay that way. Okay, if that's the way you want it. Okay. Same as the OT because you look at the OT where that is, that was basically done the same way. It, it, it deterred any development in the area.
So what?
The under, the, the, the zone is P O D. Okay, and the underlying zone is agriculture. Okay. At least the, the, yeah, use is agriculture, but the, the, the zone is P O D. Which is a useless zone to me, okay? The OT and the OT two is the zone. Let's, you know, make it all agriculture. You know, if you have a single, if someone owns a piece of property and it's whatever acres you want to say, five acres, 10 acres, whatever you want to say. Okay, that you can have a single family residential prop, house on it and you own it. Why not? Okay. And you want to farm it, you know, you have your, your single family house on it and you want to farm the rest of it. There's no hurt to that because you're keeping it the, the, the farming land. Unless you want to keep it as big parcels, and that's another problem. Okay, if I look at this P O Z T, uh, D zone right now, there's, there's a bunch of little properties in here that are, are not to the regulations at all. So can these people sell this 1.33 acre lot and put a house on it?
All right, well, it has a house.
Well, it has a house, but I, I don't know, I'm not looking at something with a house on it. But that's, that's the, my question with this whole zone. And I say, I think technically we should redefine these two zones. The MR, which you got in here, or MR one or MR two, it's one acre or two acre. That's pretty simple. Huh?
Three, three.
So I know that.
Let's read whatever you.
Yeah, I feel like we, I feel like there should be something that allows for residential in the zone for single family home. Just like I go with thought, I mean, we know none of us were happy about it, but that parcel where the solar panels went up, I mean, I'm sure somebody would have loved to buy that 26 acres, put a house on it and even just hay the land. And I don't, I just, which I know that we want to get the wording the right way.
That regulation.
I know that in the P O C D, we also had a list of historical farms in Berlin. And maybe there's a way to work with that to make sure that these farms can, I think a lot of them fought, fell within this Chamberlain Highway P O C D zone. Maybe there'd be a way to work the regulation to focus on those historical farms in Berlin where they don't have a house, but they would like to stick a house on their property and continue their farming.
I can remember voting on this.
Before we lose them.
Okay, well, we are in public hearing, so I'll ask, you know, before the commission delves into much further. Okay, anyone from the public wishes to talk, I think we have one take or two here.
Oh, sure, that's my. And then.
Hello, Chris Edge, 240 Kensington Road. Thank you, Commissioner, for speaking on this evening. Heads conversation with a handful of different people about the Chamberlain Highway. There've been a couple which have been, you're more traditional, like to buy it, live there, have a farm. The second is like to buy as an investment, but I'd like to have something on the property either for the business or for people who are going to live there, who are going to work the land itself. So not actually the owner, but would like to have someone work the land. So I think this is important because I think we want to find a mix that does work. I think being able to have a house on it, again, accessory use, as I understand it is, it's the secondary use, not the primary use. I think it's important to try to keep the agriculture and the farming, but I know as things change, being flexible, I think is important. Again, I know we don't want huge subdivisions, I get it. And I also agree with Commissioner Zigmont, the fact that, no, we're never going to see office buildings out there. But a mix of agriculture homes or the combination thereof, I think would be nice to have, and I think it would give some flexibility to folks in the private sector to look at it and be able to do something. I know right now, for instance, 2215, which is right next door to this property, Fontenella's property, all different people looking at it right now. Hoping it'll be a farm use. If a house was a possibility, it might make it more attractive, I can't say it would or wouldn't. But I think being, having that, the house is an accessory use is something that is definitely worth looking at and I think would be beneficial. Again, if it's done in a way that is protective and we're not going to get a subdivision, but we're going to get a house on a property where it could be a family farm or the like. I just want to give my two cents just because it is a challenging part of town. And people I've spoken with, there are properties on the market and I would agree with you. Commissioner, about the, the solar farm, I had met with somebody on that a while ago and yeah, it would be nice to have something beside the solar farm and I think this may give us an opportunity to at least bring that up with some people who might be interested in looking at it. Thank you.
All right.
You, you just said something to which I got, I don't understand, I got to ask you a question.
Sure.
Okay, is that people own a lot, a big piece of property.
Yes.
Okay. They got a single family house on it. What stops them for someone else farming the land and using it as farm? What stops them leasing that property out to another person to use that, that land as a farm? Is there anything?
That's a question for the.
It happens all the time, all, all the time, I see, most of the, the farmland is leased out to the big, the big farmers companies that, that use it as farming and, and supply good merchandise for people, people of Berlin, whatever. So you just said, you know, they, they use it as a, a farm. They can't lease it out, that don't make sense to me why they can't do that.
If it's, if, if it's a farm and there's nothing on it, you can't build a house on it, as I understand the current regs.
I think what, I think where the confusion, and I may be wrong, but what I'm hearing is there may seem to be some confusion that what Chris was pointing to was the number of parcels we have that don't have anything and a, a building on them that could be a home or that is allowed to be a home. They may have a farm building on it, may not have any building on it, they're currently farmed or were farmed.
And farmed, yeah.
But now they're laying vacant because there is no house, no one's buying it to farm it and drive there to farm it. So we've, the inquiries we've seen from, in our department are a number of people interested in parcels for sale along the Chamberlain Highway that are, that exist, they were farms, they're now for sale and they'd like to have a small farm, but they're, they can't afford to live someplace else. Come to the farm, go to their day job, come back to the farm and, and live someplace else and then go home. You know, they'd like to have
Okay.
The, their, their quarters on the farm.
Where.
To then circle back that same conversation to occupancy. I, I think that the intent here was not to regulate who lives in this unit, whether it's somebody they hire to help them with the land, whether it's the person that's operating the farm, whether it's the owner of the land. I don't think the intent with the proposal was to define who was in the unit.
We're.
Our understanding is, we've gotten inquiries that it would be for somebody who wanted to run a small farm.
Okay.
Not be regulated.
We're in here.
The town to regulate.
We're in our regulations says they can't build a house on it.
We don't allow houses on agricultural properties that on, in that zone, that zone does not allow for single family.
A O D doesn't allow you to build a house, huh? Don't remember that.
It allows agriculture. Yeah, way to, the indirect way, but an effective way is to expand the definition of agriculture.
I, I, I understand, but I.
Allow farming in a house.
I just never read in this P O D zone or OT zone that you can't build a house on your own property and farm the land. And I never read that.
Commission.
Oh.
Evening, Keith Foster, 97 Crater Lane, I have a farm at 2053 Chamberlain Highway in Kensington. And I do exactly what you were talking about, Maureen, I go do my farming, go to work, go to the farm, do the farming and go back home. And it's, it's not an easy thing to, it'd be nice to have your, your house right where your farm is. And as far as, as far as, well, I'll give you my situation, I have only 4.8 acres on my. I have only 4.8 acres on my property. So your regulations to fit my needs would have to be tweaked a little bit. Um,
Yeah.
Southern part of the P O D zone, right next to residential land. One side of me is the illustrious lettuce operation. And the other side of me is the high tension line, so I really
Jammed in there.
Between those two things. If it stays P O D, well, it's going to probably stay P O D, but if I can't build a house on there, my property is really not very marketable whatsoever. And, uh, but I'd like to have you guys take that into consideration.
Okay.
Now, as far as the other conversation that we had about, um, you know, say you own a, say you build a house out there, you lease your property out in front to do hay. Town of Berlin already has paperwork that you have to file every year, if, if you're leasing land to hay, so that, that's, that's in the, the network right now of things that have to be done on a regular basis. So the town knows about that stuff.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
I just never knew that you couldn't do a house on your land.
Left to answer about Chamberlain Highway. Um, it's a, it's going to be a sad situation because we're quickly, quickly losing whatever few farms we have left in Berlin. And if you don't introduce some new people from out of town that will have the possibility of building a house and still having their little piece of heaven as far as a family farm is concerned, uh, it's just, it's going to, it's going to turn really quick. Because people are passing away that are doing the farming.
Okay. Well noted. Anyone else that wants to, yes?
I'm not seated, so. Oh, no, it's public hearing.
It's a public hearing, you can talk.
My only question is, I just want to make sure we're talking about a single family dwelling is permitted, one single family dwelling is permitted. Is that correct on the property?
That's, that's.
What was the intent, it says A, you could change that to one single.
I just, I just don't want, when we talk about preserving agriculture in Berlin, I don't want to all of a sudden see this slippery slope of allowing a subdivision, or, you know.
Yeah.
I think that's the concern, I, you know, is, is purely the concept of having a single family dwelling on the land, whether it's, it's yours, or it's being leased, is obviously makes a lot of sense. I just don't want a slippery slope, or all of a sudden, the entire Chamberlain Highway, we've lost all agriculture.
Yeah.
And that's exactly where this could, this could be headed, so I just suggest maybe we think about the language a little more. Proposed.
Yeah, that was the intent, so maybe, um, where I have single family dwelling, one, O N E, parentheses, one, single family dwelling.
I think that's what I'm looking for, if that, everyone agrees on that language, I think that's what we should add. Thank you.
Right there, I'm circling, say, single family, A, one, single.
Nine.
Before you buy your property.
Yeah.
Um, if, if I may.
Yeah, the other thing, the other concern is that there's, there's, there's plenty of agricultural land in Connecticut where they, you only have the right to, to farm. There, the, 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 um, all, all development rights have been stripped, they've been sold, there's, there's, I, I know Commissioner Dorsey knows this well, there's, um, certainly, Dorsey, there's been, um, sale of development rights to the state, they've, you know, they've been bought up for, basically to preserve agriculture. I don't know if that's the case on the Chamberlain Highway. So that's the concern. Commissioner Dorsey is, is looking at me saying, that is absolutely the case, that you could, in theory, all of this land could eventually be developed residential. So that's the concern I have.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Um, any other commissioners have comments? Before I go back to the public, is there anyone? Yes, okay. Maybe you should just sit right there.
As I'm sitting here listening to you guys talk, another thing that could be taken into consideration is that this open land, very easily developable, uh, the Connecticut Siting Council could allow, uh, solar panels to go in there, and the town of Berlin has no power, as far as I understand, as to how, what's going to go in there.
And we don't get any power.
Yeah, and we don't get any power.
From them.
Right, so that's another thing to take into consideration as far as allowing a one-family dwelling.
Yeah. Yes, Ms. Miller.
Just, just for my own clarification. So we put one single family dwelling, and they lease out their property to say H2O, who puts up another 10 acres of
Whatever.
greenhouses. This is a possibility, correct?
Actually, I say in here for agricultural purposes specifically, a farm, a greenhouse residential, not commercial.
Okay.
Or a hobby farm.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would say the only, um, and I did not study this, and that's why I'm going to roll out where my head is going with that, is that the large-scale greenhouses are of, uh, site plan use that the commission has to see. So we look at the interpretation of the two together, um, to see if somebody would still be allowed to come in with that special permit request. Um, because you can make an application for things within the regulations. And so I wouldn't want to preclude that without having studied that question.
But the wording saying residential, I think, clarifies it to me. Not residential.
But what makes me concerned with that word residential, which actually didn't stand out for me previously, is, um, then it may not be allowed to be a commercial farm where you have a 5,000 square foot, or up to a 5,000 square foot warehouse, um, greenhouse can be put up right now by right in the agricultural zone, well, in, for agriculture. So you can put up a 5,000 square foot ware, uh, 5,000 square foot greenhouse similar to what Yerben or a pad down the road. Um, and that could go there. And that would be commercial, because he holds, he has sailed out his flowers. So wow, how would it be an, a, a commercial agricultural use of the property where someone could sell their goods, other than at a farmer's market type of setting, if you didn't allow them to have a greenhouse that was also? You, you'd be precluding a greenhouse type of, of, um, farming operation.
New houses in excess of 5,000, so it's kind of bigger than 5,000.
If it's the H2L, then he gets a site plan. Ones under 5,000 are allowed by right. Allowed by right.
Well, so some of, a point that should also be considered is generally farming is intended to, um, be a commercial use.
That's, that was the point I was trying to make.
You're, you're raising a crop for sale, or you're raising animals for sale. So I, I'm not quite sure what's, what a residential greenhouse even is other than, um, very small scale for personal use. And hobby farm, we already have a definition for hobby farm. But it wouldn't necessar, hobby farm doesn't necessarily fit residential.
So it sounds like we're having a meeting of the minds, but there's a lot that has to be cleared up with the language. I don't think that we're going to be able to clear us all up tonight. Because now we have to really look to look at all the different situations.
Hobby farm can sell, hobby farm can sell, but our description of hobby farm, I think, is not a small scale as what you might think. It's a, it's a bigger scale, so.
A property that has been developed with the primary use being a residential structure, any crops or plants raised are for the general use of the property owner, with none to very little grown for profit.
And what's that, the definition of the?
Definition, yes.
Hobby farm.
Hobby farm. One
Yes.
subsection G.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's looking at.
I'm going to have to look, all right, I got to look at this. Okay, all right. So we want to, is there any, do you want to address the commission? By all means, come on over. Maybe you should all just kind of like move over. Then we'll pass the microphone.
Thank you. Sharon Fontanella, 2127 Chamberlain Highway. Um, just a couple of, of things. I think we as a family are very passionate about retaining farming on the Chamberlain Highway. Um, our whole lives, um, myself with my family, who didn't live there, but we always went to the Chamberlain Highway after church on Sunday, or on the weekend, and you'd get fresh vegetables, and there'd be orchards and peaches. And it was wonderful. Um, a lot of that has disappeared, which is sad. And I must say that the Fontanella family, for 90 years now, has owned the property that we're asking for permission to build, and my idea was that we have, our home is on 10 acres, and that's our house and the chicken coops behind it. And then the abutting acreage is 17.44 acres. And my thought was, if one house was allowed there, it would pretty much conserve the rest of it, and that's the point I'd like to get to. Um, and I must say that the generation before me, Bob's, um, father and his brothers, Amel and Victor, worked at the farm for so many years. They built the chicken coops, but there were two of them. And one was, one lived in our house, which is the gray house on the corner. And then the other lived in the abutting Cape, in the abutting property. And it took the two men very, very long hours
Oh, it's a lot of work.
Going. So
It's a lot of work.
Because our property is now for sale, because we just can't do it anymore, we can't take care of it the way it should be cared for. Um, we because it's for sale, we feel as if a family could come, you'd need two people to run that farm. So we're thinking if one, we've had people look at our home, it's been on the market for about a year. And there's, my first question is always, what are you going to do with the land? Because that's very important to us. And I think it's very, it's very humbling to have to not be there any longer. But because it takes, there's been three or four families, where there would be, mom and dad would probably 50 to 60 years old. And then their, one of their sons or daughters, a young, would have children, and they would want a, a second house, and it would be a family farm, it'd be multi-generational, as, as our farm always was. Um, so I think if we could put one house on the 17.4 acres, that would satisfy P O C D, which, um, has asked for that in the, um, P O D area. And, um, I think it would leave farmland for local farmers that come in. We have some that come in and help, and they do some hay in our backyard, in our back ranches, and often, there's a couple of families, they were, they was, it'd be wonderful that there could be someone that could come, and you know, the farmers in this community, they gather together, and it's often not just one. When it's time to get the hay in, everybody shows up.
Yeah.
They all work together. That's my vision, so that was what prompted us to think, maybe if we could put one house there, we could find a family, um, where there would be mom and dad, and then maybe the sons with the young children that could be in the other house, and keep it going. So that's kind of our focus.
Yeah. Oh, thank you.
Sharon, Sharon? Just want you to sign in.
I just have to say, I thinned a lot of peaches for your dad and uncle.
Yeah.
So just an idea too, while we're talking about how to make this.
Just trying to make it, we're, we're trying to make it work, okay. All right, hang on, hang on, because the hour's getting late, we still have the rest of the agenda.
But I don't know, because, um, unfortunately, by the time I met the grandparents, and, you know, we're pretty elderly and
Yeah.
So just, just a quick thought, because I know this, this is going to need some work, and, um, I think it's a sound idea. But I'm also looking at the property next to what is, uh, what is that, C T Rose now, or, um, Chamberlain Growers?
Grower, yeah.
Chamberlain Growers. You got a small parcel there, they already have a two-family house, but there's another lot next to it, under 10 acres. So I know, I believe that was the old Sunny Borders, I believe that's in the P O, uh, P O C D as a historical farm. So is Mr. Bostrom's, so I think that if we could also maybe add some component of allowing one single family residence on historical farms in Berlin, um, I think that might be a way to preserve some of these lots that don't exactly meet the 10-acre minimum. But, um, you know, still keep the agricultural aspect to town, and still preserve those farms.
It's a good thought.
Uh, way I, if I may, the way I had suggested it was, uh, the commission consider allowing, if I can find where I wrote it, but, um, but recognizing of parcel, the existing parcels that may be under, or under acreage, um, that I think would allow at least one more, which may or may not, I actually didn't even, um, notice it. When I did this map I did for you that said what the parcels were, it's the one at the end of Apple Lane on the south side. It's in the P O T. I don't know the size of that parcel, it is really part of Solix property to the north, the 1308, but it's a separate property. Because Apple Lane is a separate property that comes in between them, owned by the Solix as well. So, um, that's the other one identified as, um, lesser lot size without a house already, as is the Meriden Wells site, which imagine something else going on, but never know what another, we can't tell what another town does with their parcel either.
Okay, is there anyone, I'm just going to go to, because we're in a public hearing, is there anyone online who wishes to comment at this time regarding this application? Okay, hearing none. Okay, anything else before we?
Um, the only other thing I would like to call to your attention, because I'm surprised that someone's not here to speak to it, and perhaps it wasn't a conversation with the Fontanelles, maybe it was someone else who came in with regard to this. But it was brought up as to whether or not allowing a, by right, single family would allow for the use of the accessory dwelling unit within the house um, regulations that we also have in the regulations, you know, our accessory dwelling units allow single family homes in certain zones to allow for.
Oh, okay, so if somebody.
Person was interested
Yeah.
in that, as I said, they don't appear to be here, or giving testimony with regard to that. Um, that, that provision for a special permit for an accessory dwelling unit is listed for very specific zones, so wouldn't apply to the P O D, because it's not a listed zone that allows for accessory dwelling units, but, um, I
Okay.
Future zoning officer reading the reg, getting that application, I want to, I'd like to address it during the.
And I think we have to think about that, too.
Think about whether or not you want to say that's not the intent, or that is the intent.
All right.
I think that's, and, and with, if it is the intent, I do think it needs a further amendment to a different regulation. But at least it lays the ground for somebody to move forward with that, if it's
Yeah.
what to do.
Well, this has all been very interesting and eye-opening, and I think, um, you know, we're going to have to do some work on this, I think. Just to make sure that we incorporate a lot of the good ideas that have come up today. Um, but do we want to keep the public hearing open, or? So, does anyone want to continue, or?
I'll make a motion to continue.
Okay, motion to continue by Ms. Dorsey, and that will be to the, what, the next meeting, the 17th, or two weeks, two Thursdays, okay, 18th. Uh, motion by Ms. Dorsey, do we have a second? Second by Ms. Daly, further discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Those opposed, so moved. All right, so in two weeks, hopefully we'll have a better grasp and handle on this, and hopefully you won't have to wait so long. Um, we'll try to see if we can get you to the, to the top of the, of the, of the list. But thank you very, very much for coming in, and for all of your positive thoughts and feedback. All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, and I hope you feel better. Oh, good Lord. My goodness gracious. Yeah, wow, you're doing good. You're doing good. We motivated you. Oh, that's a long day, long time. Okay, so next up, we have the text amendment of D E P, D E B. Realty to Add a New Subsection to Plan Shopping A, Permitted Site Plan Uses, six A two, to include the addition of Event Venue as a new use. But we have to open this by October eleventh. Do we have to open it now? There's anyone here to talk? Alright.
Being here, I would suggest you postpone the opening of the public hearing to the next.
No, postpone, postpone the opening of the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to postpone.
Okay, Ms. Jorsy, and who has second, Zigma?
Number eighteenth meeting.
Mr. Zigma has the second. Alright, further discussion, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, so moved. Deliberation, so the Fontanelles, we are going to, what was your feeling about that, we're gonna continue on? Do we even need a motion?
Have to.
Okay. It is, okay. Alright, so I don't have, need a motion on that, and I don't need a motion on the other guy either, do I? Okay, fine, planner's comments.
Just wanted to circle or give you a heads up. And anybody who may have joined the town council meeting would have heard that at Fifty-Five Steel Boulevard, they are having issues with the compaction of the dirt.
Oh, boy.
The dirty dirt, for a soft spot under the parking lot, so you, and the, the plan, it seems to be the most physically responsible, as well as what's being worked on, is a plan to retain more of this, more of the dirt on site, which will result in a grading change to the parking lot. And staff, interdepartmental staff feels that that is something that would be a site plan amendment. So Brandon Yantick Engineering is currently working on a modified plan that we expect to be added to the next agenda.
Yes. Thank you for that.
That is not the, and again, I'd rather keep that for the meeting, but I did wanna give everybody the, the heads up, but that would not be the recommendation that is been substantially endorsed, I'd say, by the meetings I've been at with engineering, environmental firms, and the town council. As I understand it, if you contain the dirt, you're not moving the problem elsewhere, you're sealing it in place. And that's why you put the liner on and seal the property. I will, however, leave further understanding of that and explanation to the people that understand dirty dirt, are far more qualified than I for discussions on dirty dirt, as we call it, as, as.
Okay.
So no difference.
All of the interesting things that they have. Anything else for us, Maureen, or can we go on to the commission of comments?
I think we can go on.
Do you have a commission of comments?
Yes. I heard about that late this afternoon. I heard about that this afternoon, I understand it's covered right now. That's what I heard about, again, I only heard about it today, we had gotten an inquiry a long time ago that they, they're going to be, they have a sign application in for a new sign. They do have a replacement sign application, I think that application is in. I know they've talked to Polly about what they can put for a sign, because Polly was like, it's a residential zone, not allowed. I said, I believe there's a variance that allowed for the sign. We're doing the zoning research on the sign itself. Again, I, the, however, the mural, we may have to go to whether or not it's under the town's purview to make a, any comment on it. And I'm, I'm, I'm leaning towards, can you tell, which side of the building is it on? At that, there is. There is a very big, there is a lot of case law on the signs. I'll ask the. Yeah, knows. That's out, I think our office got it through the mayor and town manager's office. We have had what I would call dozens of inquiries with regard to a specific church in town, and what other uses are viable for that church that's in the residential zone.
Thirty-nine.
Yes. So that would be something the assessor handles, I can't even talk, I can't even speak to the, to the assessment. I just can't. But that is the existing use. That is the advice that the people that have come into the office have gotten, and we, there may be text amendments coming along, there may be other, they're looking into what can be done with a property. Building Department has been out there on a number of occasions.
Alright, let me see if there's anyone else, Scott Hamel or Steve Biella online, do you have any? This is under commission business, do you have anything you wanna bring to the forefront?
I do not.
You're good?
Hey, Madam Chair, I just have one quick question for Maureen, I probably should, this is quick. Is Prentice, the house on Worthington Ridge, Prentice Place Home, is that occupied?
The house on Prentice?
The, the old Prentice Place House, because that thing looks, that thing looks like no one's living there, and it's like, almost like blighted.
On Worthington Ridge?
Worthington Ridge, it's the old Prentice Place, a big brick house.
Over the years.
Oh, yeah.
The house, I believe it is, the zoning officer has, over time, I say the last three zoning officers have worked on compliance on that property, and it's like, they work on it, then they move backwards, I don't know the status of it now, I don't know if we have any active complaints on it at this, right now.
Okay, no, I just was curious, because it's terrible.
Oh, thank you.
Do we know what's happening to that house on, my question is the house on Tollgate Road, not the party house, but across the old, the old Robey House. The old, it's the White Farm House, diagonally across from the party house. Orchard Road, yes, Orchard Road, yes.
I'm on Tollgate at the.
Toll, I said Tollgate, okay, I'm sorry. No, on, on Orchard Road, it used to be the old Robey House, it was an old farmhouse.
Information on it.
I hear they have like no water, no electricity or anything in that house, and I think there's people dwelling in it, I'm not sure. They seem to put up a mighty fancy little greenhouse and garden, I'm thinking.
Oh, they got, supposed to do stuff like that.
Well, yeah, but.
The same owners.
Yeah, no, it's not the same owners, Jim Robey was forced to sell that house a long time ago. And I think it changed hands several times since then. But I've heard that there's like no running water in there, no electricity, I never, I see new cars there, but I never see any activity, and it's like, it's, it's sort of blighted in the fact that they're not taking care of the front of the house, and everything's overgrown, their porch is ripped down, but it's right where it fell. I mean, so it's just, it, it could be like a rat problem, I think. I, I mean, I don't know what's happening with it.
He was unsightly to the zoning officers.
Yeah.
So he just went through this, this week on Wetlands. No, this week Wetlands made a decision that approved the, and I don't wanna speak to what it was approved as, cuz I don't, I don't have the call of their hearing as to what it was, but got approval. So we would, I would be expecting, without having had a conversation with him, that a subdivision application will be coming to this commission. An abandonment of the, the, the garden use there, garden supply use. Garden store. Yeah, that was approved for a restaurant in our. Well, we have the plans laying all over our floor, and the stipulated judgment calls for, you recall that was a stipulated judgment with the commission, maybe you weren't all on it, it was on, it was several years ago. I think nineteen maybe, that that came through, and it, the, the stipulation judgment is very specific as to the uses of the property. There was a provision for it possibly not to be a restaurant, if at that time, if the time of build-out, if that, a different commercial use is appropriate, I believe it says something along those lines in the stipulated judgment. Except for the accessible apartment on the lower level in the rear. There's a handicapped accessible apartment that being built, in the new build, that was approved as part of that. Years and years.
So that this way, the property would stay open.
Right, but the town, the, the property owner has to instigate that.
Yeah.
But it is allowed by, by statute. But not town-owned farmland, it's the develop, it's the, can't be developed.
Yeah, because then you can still pay the field, or if you have a group that wanted to work with the town and have a farm or whatever.
You, you mentioned that to me the other day, I haven't been able to talk to Jim yet. We don't know.
Alright.
We don't have it yet. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.